It's always announced volunteers in the completion of the opening online that Thank you to all to part in the
I did talk to Butch, he said, he said a lot. I didn't ask how many. Yeah, we do have the poster. You'll start seeing these around town. I think Christine did it. Christine Marshall, yeah. Yep, there's a postcard that's gonna get to every mailbox in town next week. We got it back from the printer, but we're until everything's on the website, we're not going to send it out, so go out next week. We had almost 400 at last Springstown meeting, so. Well, I know. So the first item is recap of town meeting, and that was really placed just in as just a brief summary. I know later on tonight's agenda is discussion of MBTA, so we'll leave that. Other than the MBTA, you know, everything passed and quite a lot of business got done between the bylaws and annual budget for both town and water and some of the spending articles. So we're doing the the normal follow up for that with the finance and accounting, setting up all the account numbers. Jim's got his hands full with all the bylaws. Those all, you know, need to be sent to the Secretary of State or the Attorney General's office with the documentation. So I know he's gonna do his best to get that done before his last day, but if not, you know, he's working closely with that. So, yeah. They have 90 days to review it, and and in my experience, they often take very close to that.
To the day, yeah.
Yeah, because they're receiving them from communities all over the state that all have town meetings around the same time. So every now and then they'll they'll contact towns seeking an extension. But I've only seen that happen maybe two or three times. But yes, 90 days and depending on the bylaw. Some bylaws take effect the date of the vote. Some take effect once the Attorney General.
The day of voting.
Yeah.
So it goes back and just town bylaws take effect the day of.
Yeah, so that where that gets into things like with the animal bylaw. Even though the bylaws approved, it's not actually enforceable. I don't know that we need to split hairs. I think I personally would feel comfortable starting to, you know, put up signage before the AG acts, but if in the event that someone was issued a fine, there would be potential that it wouldn't actually be enforceable until after the Attorney General approves the bylaw.
I doubt many people actually
I felt like there might have been some self censorship going on because I think where the MBTA took, you know, more than two hours. After that, I just feel like people probably felt, hey, if we push through, we can get this all done in one night and not have to come back a second night. No one said that, but I have to think some number of people were thinking that and may have had. Yeah, may have had questions that they said, well, I don't want to be the one to prolong this and and make it go to a second night. So I'm just speculating, but with 49 articles. You know, there may have been some sense of, you know. Did they want it inconvenience 200 people? Right, yeah, unless it was really a good question, so. I do think it did, yeah, because I, you know, I felt like, first of all, I think the the way that particular article was run was a little bit awkward, like there were certain things where I had factual information that that might have been helpful, but it wasn't really like I would have almost felt like I was like cutting in or interrupting. And I didn't really like the layout. I didn't have a clear line of sight with the board, so I couldn't really get a sense of like. And and I personally felt that way with 530 people there. And 49 articles, you know, I didn't want to like say something that maybe would generate six or eight new people standing up and then all of a sudden it snowballs and maybe that was not the right instinct, but it's with that kind of crowd, you know, you don't want to be the one to kind of set things down some side trip. You know, maybe if the MBTA had been like a standalone on on a separate night where everything was all about that, that could have allowed things to really run their course with a more complete presentation. And and more of the factual information presented that really didn't come up on Tuesday unless people or Monday unless people did review the materials online or read the booklet. Because it's all out there. Well, and I Yeah, and I had been on the list to give a town report and that had, I guess, been forgotten and 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 again, when it came to the budget, because I had intended to give it before the annual budget, not at the beginning of the meeting. And when that came and went, I I thought about it, but I said, you know, again, is what I have to report so important that it could push the town meeting to a second night? And I decided not to speak up. So I don't know if that was the right decision or not. But and the acoustics were terrible.
That's the first thing Rick said to me.
Well, I even think, you know, it might have been nice. I mean hindsight's 2020, but it might have been nice to tell people that we would, our intent was to have it in the auditorium and we couldn't because of the fire. I mean, it was certainly not the, you know, that was the best we could do, and I do think it was the best we could do because it's a bigger space than the Page Cafeteria, which would not have held that number of people. So it was really our only choice, but the acoustics were terrible and I'm sure some number of people felt that was because we don't know what we're doing. It's actually because that there was a fire and the auditorium, which would have been perfect for the use, was not available. That's unfortunate. So it might have been nice to say that.
Hi, can you folks hear me? This is Brad. Can you hear me?
Yes.
On the Zoom, Wendy, I'm not able to hear you. Angus is coming across crystal clear. But but your microphone isn't working as well as his. No, cannot.
That's true for me, too.
Try it, try it out.
How about now?
Yes. Yes, that works. Yep. All right. Thank you.
Yes, yes, I can. Good, yeah. All right. Okay, next item, updates. The town was awarded a or it says awarded, that's not really the right term, recognized with a AAA bond rating, so that's great news. And included in the packet is the Standard and Poor's report. And, you know, I think that's, you know, obviously testament to to a lot of good work, but it's also something with very tangible results that we'll see later tonight when the board is asked to approve the bond issue for the water projects. The interest rates that we got are are the best that you can get. So that's certainly good news. And it's very rare for a town this size, as you know. Middle Street Bridge construction progress. You were all on site this morning, so see with your own eyes kind of what's going on. It's 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 moving right along. Projects well on track, well on schedule. And it was reported at this morning's meeting that it's expected to be passable by the end of the calendar year with the basic course of paving and open to travel. We won't have a specific date for some time, but that's very exciting. The project won't be officially closed out until the top course of paving goes on in 2026 because it's got to go over the winter to settle, so it won't be formally closed out for another probably 14 months. By contract, S and P Corporation has until November of 2026. We've always felt that it would likely be more like probably by June of next year. But for practical purposes, it is expected to be travelable probably by Thanksgiving, so that's very exciting. Page Pipe Save Crosswalk Bid Deadline for Construction Bids. Those are due on May 15. And we had the onsite visit last Tuesday with prospective bidders. That was not a mandatory prebid like we had done with the bridge, because this is a more routine project, so we didn't feel it was necessary for people to to attend. But there were attendees from prospective bidders. Other bidders would be absolutely invited to attend, so there was an addendum issued earlier today with with responses to questions that had come up on the site meeting. And we're hopeful to get multiple bids within budget and move forward to a word of construction contract. As you know, the the goal is to get the new crosswalk and the pedestrian blinker installed before school starts in the fall. So that's well on track, and I know I included in the packet the broader filings with DOT for the other crossings and potential future sidewalk extension toward the toward the east. So like I said, my memo, those are very wonky filings that's you can see kind of some of the bureaucracy that MassDOT imposes on these kinds of things, but I think we've been well represented by our engineering consultant on that. I did have a very very promising conversation with Senator Char at the meeting this morning. And he asked me what what they can do, so I sent him a detailed write up today with links to all of the information, you know, kind of emphasizing the amount of design work that's going to be ahead for the other crossings and while we've explicitly petitioned DOT to take on those costs, and we think they should take on those costs. If the state through a budget earmark provides us funds to continue doing engineering and survey work for for the identified crossings, I told him that would be extremely helpful and and he seemed to indicate that he thought that was potentially in the cards, so. And actually, that ties right into the next one, municipal budget priorities I put together based on following the the last meeting. So I think that's a good synopsis of some of the high level things that the state could assist with. That was also provided to Representative Ramos's office as well. Green Communities Annual Report. We share this with the board every year. It was submitted timely. There was some back and forth. I don't know, Rick, if you want, but it wasn't kind of formally finally approved by the state until the last few weeks. And this is really, you know, Rick has been enormously helpful on this for many years, including filing, so, but I always share that because it is a lot of data in it. I don't know if there's anything you want to. Next item, the scope of work for Town Center Traffic Pedestrian Safety. This is something that was funded with a state earmark, no local funds. I have not yet signed the contract. I'm not here tonight asking for you to approve it, but if you have any concerns with the scope, I would want to hear that because I've I've read it. I think it's a good scope. If you guys don't have concerns, it would be my intent to sign that contract in the near term and get that work underway. The reason that we we haven't done so sooner is because we wanted the corridor plan to be complete before we initiate a new planning process for for the Town Center pedestrian safety, but. 50,000, yeah. Yeah, and that's got to be fully expended by June 30 of 2026. I mean, prior prior contracts I've signed where it's where it's state money, it's not local money, so I'm comfortable going forward. But I wanted to share it to make, you know, just if there were concerns and the board wanted on a future agenda, we could do that. But if there aren't concerns, I would I would intend to sign, sign the contract and kind of get it, get it underway. The Town Hall Library Crossing, we did receive conceptual plan from TEC in the last few days. We actually, I guess it was last week, we provided some comments. We got an updated draft. Butch and Christine and I have a Zoom meeting with them tomorrow morning to review that in detail. I left it out of the packet because I think it's not quite ready for primetime, so I want to wait till we have something that's staff feel is in good shape and then we'll put that out and so you can expect to see something probably as early as next week and then we can talk about process wise. And, you know, how that might tie into the library feasibility. But there's definitely going to be, you know, efforts to get that. You know, get notice out to those residents and bidders and and schedule a public meeting to obviously, at this stage, all we have is the conceptual plan and survey. There is no further budgeted work for this, so we'll have the work product with the concept plan. But there's going to be plenty there for people to talk about and give input on so that when we do get more resources to take that to a further stage of engineering, that we have some direction on what people like and what they don't like. I think it's a pretty exciting plan. I think people generally will like it, the devil's in the details, but I do think generally people are going to be pretty excited about the ideas and I know Corinne is, you know, the library is going to be pretty happy about it. Just last week, we closed on the acquisition of the conservation restriction on Evergreen Farm. That closing took place last Thursday. Next item, the pickleball, those, the funding was approved Monday night. I had kind of preemptively asked the town planner to put a placeholder on Tuesday's Planning Board of Agenda, so we are going to go forward with that. Preliminary informal conversation basically to make sure that that I understand what you know, we're going to have to, I'm assuming we're going to have to go through site plan review. I think that's a safe assumption. My question is going to be really what level of documentation they're going to expect because that's going to inform whether it's work we can do largely in-house or whether we might have to engage an engineering firm to put together, you know. Yeah, we we have a survey base plan. And we have all the wetlands, the topo is all surveyed, all the ground features are surveyed, so we have a very good base plan. We know exactly what the dimensions of the courts are because that's all very prescribed by the you know, pickleball manual and we can sketch out generally where the footpath is going to be. So that's something Butch and I could do with with a scale and a ruler, you know, and if that's sufficient, that would be great. And so we'll see. And if it's something more than that, then we'll, we would have resources with the feasibility study money that if we do need to engage for you know, a full set of site plans, you know, if that's what we need to do, that's what we'll have to do, but I'll learn more on Tuesday night. Staffing updates, you're aware, obviously, this will be Jim's second to last meeting. We wish him well and extend our thanks for his continuing good work and he's going to sprint through the finish line. And and I mean that honestly, he's really, he's he's been working very hard as always. And same with Clay. We're very sorry to see him go. He's been doing terrific job, make sure there's good transition planning. And all of the projects and initiatives he's been working on, he's been working with Rebecca and myself and with Jen and with Molly, and I think there's going to be good continuity. We're already reviewing resumes for both of those positions. We've gotten more than 10 applications for each. And I met with Rebecca today and we're shortlisting for interview and we're expecting to start interviews. I think we're going to prioritize the conservation because you know, he's leaving two weeks earlier, but I think it's likely we'll start interviews there as early as next week. And possibly start interviews on the town clerk applicants the following week. And there's there's definitely some applicants in both candidate pools who are very highly qualified, so that doesn't mean they're the right fit and it doesn't mean we can afford them, but but there's there's good, there's good talent in the talent pool, so. An unfortunate casualty of Clay's departure is the summer land stewards program, and that was something we we thought hard about and we just couldn't see a way to manage that without an agent in place. It was. Well, no, no. So that's one that we've now built into the operating budget. Yeah, so. Yeah, the invasive, the the professional management, we did extend the and and that's work that would typically be done in the fall. So that is something that we're going to be working with, you know, kind of open space or and the right people to make to because we would like to get put that, you know, get some work done this fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yes. Yeah, yeah, and I met with, yeah, I met with Molly actually yesterday and today and there's going to be a request to the commission next Wednesday for them to authorize a certain amount of funding through the Wetlands Protection Fund, so that would be paid not out of the operating budget. Pretty modest amount of funding, but I think it'd be extremely helpful for continuity. Strictly on the permitting issues, nothing to do with any of the policy issues, but anything to do with enforcement or administration of the Wetlands Protection Act. No, not not for that period of time. But Jen, Jen will help provide some continuity there, but I don't think there's going to need to be a whole lot of activity, yeah. It's definitely eligible. It requires commission approval, and I do expect they will approve it, but until they do, we couldn't actually sign an agreement. So they meet next Wednesday.
Just a comment I mentioned with both Jim and Clay. They're really enjoying work with both of them, but I think they're both tremendous assets to the town and obviously helped to accomplish an awful lot of these projects and that done. I think they're lucky, Miss, and I hope the town appreciates what they've done.
Thank you. All right, and then the next one, this is really a kind of a preview of a future meeting, you know, where this can be more front and center, but the priorities list, I wanted really with with this being Rick's final meeting on the board. I wanted to kind of, you know, put something together that's kind of, I think, a pretty complete list. There's one thing I added since then, which is, you know, cybersecurity plan. But but that I hadn't either. I mean, there's something about there about improving it, but that's a very tangible thing that that I've penciled in. So we'll have a future meeting where the newly composed board can provide direction on on where you want me and staff to be devoting our energies. We we do very well for a town our size, but as you've heard me say before, with our cyber liability insurance that we renew every year. Every single year, they move the goalpost. Every single year, there's new tangible requirements that we need to make. It is good. It is. I mean, it's, you know, and and so we have to keep up with the risk and that's a continuing thing. And really, the thing that that has been on our list for a while. But, you know, we have, we haven't been able to really advance is is a actual written cybersecurity plan and incident response plan. So everything's really outlined so that in particular, if you have staff turnover, that you have continuity and and that there's not, that you're not relying on institutional memory, that you actually have documentation of what your protocols are. What your standards standards are and what your actions are in the event that we we do find ourselves facing a ransomware attack or something like that. So while we are doing what we need to do to satisfy insurance and satisfy the the bond rating agencies. There's definitely when, you know, like when Christian goes to conferences and learns about best practices, there's definitely things that we could be doing that we have not yet done. So he and I are scheduled to go to a cybersecurity summit next Thursday in Worcester. So that that is something I'd like to focus more time toward. Well, I wouldn't say I'd like to. I am too. Okay. Okay, all right.
Can you get that? Can it be sorted so that completed tasks are put like at the bottom?
Yeah, yeah, and I think, yeah, yeah, I think with the with the next one, I think I'm going to take everything complete and just take it off. Wendy and I talked about that earlier this week and just or play a separate page, yeah. Yeah, definitely. And and also I have it in Excel, so I can, if you if you want it in that form, I'm happy to share it and then you can do your own, you know, sorting and analysis. We did that prior to the session last July, and I think that was that was helpful. I didn't do that for this because yeah, it's a big document and if you start having multiple drafts, that can become a reconciliation issue, but I think for a goal setting session, it would be totally appropriate for everyone to have it editable and then we kind of mash it together. Yep. Right, yeah. Right. Yeah, yeah, and this is actually, there's there's an active group waiting for a legal opinion and I have not even had time to write it up and send it to them. Yeah, there's some documents from the 1980s that that at their face are legal documents. But there's question as to whether they have any relevance because they weren't anything we were even aware of until about two months ago. It came up in the context of Park and Rec Commission discussion of whether fees should be charged for certain use of facilities. And the Riding and Driving Club basically asserting that 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 they should be exempt and here's why, and they provided all these documents that turns out we did have in some archive file somewhere, but I had never laid eyes on. I don't think anyone in the modern era was even aware of. So we just said, you know what, we'll refer them to legal and we'll sit. My my personal opinion is they don't have any legal relevance, but I'm not an attorney and we'll we'll run that up the flagpole, but with the other demands we placed on town council in the last six weeks, it's not something that's been, yeah. Yeah, there's another, there's another one that came up. Yeah, there's another, there's another one that came up and, uh, yeah, now it's, it's, it's. Yeah, it's, 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 it's an issue and it's something we've engaged, uh, with council on and, uh. It's, it's, it's to do with, there's a fifteen foot right away on the westerly edge of that lot, and, uh, there's been. You know, some neighbor. Issues. Conflicts and, uh, so there's questions about, um. Kind of the language and, and this goes back to the nineteen. Tens, like. And it's been part of every case, you know, we've noticed, it's anyhow, it's, it's a matter of whether it's exclusive use easement. Or. Um, you know, a requirement to allow someone to pass and repass. But, yeah, police, police have been called on the matter. Multiple times, so it's, it's something that, again, we're working with legal and. Yeah, but it's just the kind of thing that it comes, it came up over, uh, the Christmas holidays and, and. It's something I've personally put in at least sixteen hours on since that time. Um. So. It's just one of those things that comes up, yeah, so.
Nope.
Alright, so I would say, um.
He, he's ready, uh, but he's, I guess Brock's, the, the contractor has been. Pretty busy, he said he's had a hard time hitting them now, so, but yeah, he wants to bring forward, he wants to make sure. To proof with them that the scope he would like to cover is within the available budget and then. As has happened with prior paving cycles, he brings that to the board, shares his intent of these are the roads he'd like to do. Gets any input that you have and, and then goes forward with the contract for the summer paving.
Pretty amazing document that you mentioned.
It's a little bit longer, I think, than we, it's, it's, it's almost six pages long, uh, the exhibits certainly are, like, the. Uh, but we learned a lot in this working through a lot of live rounds, uh, we started with. Um, the background on, of saying what the benefits are, uh, we, because there's definitely a need for deer management form. Um, we did explore other games, but, uh, the need. The expectation wasn't there to really, to really with other game for. Um, deer, the probably most popular form of current use, plus, um, post tackle. Um, the exhibits did include, uh, presentations from Mission Wildlife, uh, some of that. On harvest rates of the last seven to ten years, um, some of their targets. Uh, and it was pretty striking how, um. Impacted our researches are, this case, you know, reflected here, uh, the, the visual stark contrast of. Another story, a healthy story versus no other story, um, we did learn some of the other, um, impacts, you see the black lung stories, it impact on things like songbird populations. Uh, increasing base species, it's usually not for forage for the deer, uh, increase in turkey. With that, there's also potential for future consideration for other species such as turkey. They report that. The more eerie you have, the more turkey you often have. Oftentimes, you have to, the, very, you know, story. Um. Anyway, this document really was, uh. Preliminary findings, um, there's a lot of information there still waiting to get back from, uh. The town council, the legal, or Indian, um, that was, did it see, uh. posed the, posed the questions and did, by them. I would expect that this could then be turned into a final framework for recognition, um, after it integrated feedback from them. Um. Go through some of the objectives and we did take a look at the. Town parcels, um. We initially weeded out a lot of the smaller parcels, parcels that either don't have a, um. Uh. Capable use existing, um, such as, you know, bill parcels, things like that, we will down to just a subset of parcels with larger fractal in space. Um, relayed out the criteria, we reviewed those parcels for, we did some. Rough preliminary mapping with, uh, some setbacks, um. Uh, in the state regulations, there's a five hundred foot setback for dwellings, nine hundred fifty feet from. Uh, roadways, so we mapped some of that out just to take a look at what kind of useful portions we may see on that subset of, uh, parcels. And it does look like there's, um, several acres across several parts, parcels that may be compatible, uh, to integrate some kind of program on. Um, we also looked at, uh, types of hunting, it seems that bow hunting is probably most compatible, um, in part due to, uh, those setbacks as well as the existing. Um, uses of those, those land of that rooms, um, usually when you implement a bow hunting. Program, you can do it from tree stands where you aim a little bit of the shots down, there's far less risk of any overshoot or. Um, safety issue in those regards, uh, it's easier to manage, um. So that would definitely be our, our recommendation, keep this, this, this developing, uh, preferably from three stands unless there's an accessibility issue, uh, so. Um, we are way back from legal on some of the liability, uh, insurance coverage type, um, questions. Uh, we also would recommend, along the lines of the pilot season, um, whatever paper between the side to adopt, um, policy, um. We certainly would recommend keeping it open to adjustments after the season. Um, with that, we also recommend that. As we identified, conservation need, community management, um, using this as an opportunity to gain back some information. On our open space through that program, um, we've seen other programs that use self-reported logs, and they can cite wildlife sightings and, or. Where, um, trail users, uh. As well as, it'll help people log and come back to utilizing that permit, um, with that, we would hope to prioritize issuance of hunting permits to. People that can spend more time in our parcels rather than, for that all in town for a weekend, totally, currently, we put them for five, or five of the permits we. Would rather see it used in a meaningful way that has a potential ecological impact. Um. We, uh, we definitely. Welcome any feedback based on this report, um, either tonight or in the future on select words, and things are still pending, so there's not much we can do until there's that, uh, feedback from council. Uh, but if this like what it feels that I have to be going in a different direction or missed something, um, we welcome that feedback, we also recommend opening, um. Opening to public comments and some process before formal adoption, uh, our process is refrain taking substantial public comment, you know, everything information is objective based. Um, so we offer a reflective mode, that we're welcome to follow along, but that we would over recommend that there would be a formal period to. In a general innovation, concerns, questions, broader scale. Um, there was definitely, uh, some, uh, regular participation from public, so people, like, um, have been. At least corrected following one. Uh, one of the final notes that we have. And this question came up with some of the public, as well as some of our own questions internally, but enforcement, um, should a hunting policy? Be adopted and, and should there be a regulated hunting program, um, we wanted to make it clear that we have no expectation to. Um, utilize, uh, town police or hunting enforcement, Massachusetts does have the Massachusetts Environment Police in place for such matters. They're better equipped to deal with any kind of stands or further out there, um, so our recommendation. If I'm framework, um, my issuance would probably lean towards kind of adopt a. Clear, concise policy for reporting, um. Means and methods for us to get that information that's, the police under agents of how. If they spot it off like, you know, things, we definitely not, but. So we had a discretion that it means, just because we already have a state system that is enforced there. I think that pretty much sums it up hopefully, uh, off, we love six pages there.
Yeah, it's way more than I expected, so.
It's really an opportunity, I mean, I, Clay gets, you know, ninety percent of the credit for, well. This, you know, the rest was waiting and their thoughts. Um, Stewart waited with, you know, holding together the information from state, but, um, but Clay can post it. Yeah, but, um. Yeah, and to me, you know, one of the biggest takeaways that. It's kind of an eye opener. The, the ecological impact that deer currently have. And, you know, I sort of noticed it incidentally in the past, but I never really thought about it. But now as I walk around different areas and I, and I see. How so many areas are so overground, you know, interestingly, if you get far enough out in the woods, it's less overground because. It's not so much of a buffet when it isn't. The more, the more built up areas, there's everybody's yard is buffet, and hence there's a huge deer population, so the woods, I mean, probably overground, but. Um, you know, it's, it's, uh. Um, it's. It's a more significant ecological threat than I ever really thought about.
Yeah, it was amazing to see those numbers, um, Vision Wildlife. Uh. Estimates there's, uh, population density of twenty-five to thirty deer in this, this region of Massachusetts, and its target is to have. Ten to twelve, and it'd be six, I'd say twelve per square mile, so. Um, it's almost three hundred meters, that's the sea, and that would suggest that. Rolling through West Newbury. It's about thirteen square miles, that's over three hundred deer. They obviously don't recognize town lines, but that's just so much more forage, and it does clear out all the end story.
So is that why you elected to have multiple breathing areas? I mean, I was vision, but one.
I would think, um, from conservation standpoint, it would make sense to open as many areas that are safe to do so, um. Mass fishing game has indicated that they'd like to create our harvest and version process state, um, especially with the product benefits that we are now. I think that if we're adopting this. With a role, or at least an adjacent role of, um. Ecological management, it makes sense to try to broaden and work in tandem with other hunting programs and other. Uh, ecological incentives, uh, and just the basis species alone. If that's the only thing they don't need, then we see how much bittersweet I get calls pretty frequently, but I guess who, who there's. Straight up everything else, but. Getting basis takes a toll because all those cases we made of things are eaten, you know.
We were trying to do it forcefully, and.
Yeah. They actually have the landscape managers.
That's a rich one, that's the best takeaway I had in. Thing was when they showed me all the crazy in the photos, it's like. I've seen that, and that's based on my, my property, I grew up last night. Eighteen years, getting my wedding, so you number thirty or fifty, I'd be low. Um, maybe even salt pepper out, but, and I had a hunt, a bow hunt, so a lot of this is. You're spot on, you said any tree stand, because if they miss the arrow, it goes to the ground, doesn't go anywhere. But I thought the presentation was fantastic, by the way. Um, I like the process you identified, just a question, we had a. Request last year, I think it was, for somebody to hunt pheasant on the Andreas property. I don't think there's that many pheasants left in town. Um.
Well, the only, the only pheasant we have here is stockpasted, they don't. Boxed climate warming, so maybe it'll survive better, historically, pheasants don't do very well. At least that time around, I don't see them anymore.
Because they were stock. I, I either live it or diminish.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, so then, I mean, but they, they're not a native species, you know, they're from China, Asia, and, and, uh. They don't, they're not well there. Um, which is why, if they're not continually stocked behind a break, then they feel like them.
So another parcel I thought of was one that was that trail that goes from Georgetown. Over to, uh, the back of Great Hill.
Hmm.
Uh, we mentioned that was on the agenda a few weeks ago, and then you watched somebody saw him. On my way through, it's a pretty nice, where you are in that, but. That'd be a good place to hide, because. How all lines on one side, there's nobody in there, and it does tie in with Great Hill, so.
The hardest part with that section is the five hundred foot setback dwellings, and that is true.
Right, I guess it will come on the left if you go in.
Yeah, we tried to map it, and it is worth noting that the map that we did was truly preliminary, that did mostly define that, been a very great pass, you know, maybe some dwellings that aren't except on there, things like that. The eighty degrees range, twenty-three, so. Um, prior to actually adopting formal math or policy, I would recommend soliciting, um, a professional service and see if somebody could help. Make something for a hacker.
So it seems like we were waiting for legal review, right, once we get that. I don't know what entity will put it together, um, but it seems to be at that point, going into final draft and then going on.
Yeah, and some of the questions that are, are also insurance questions, and, uh, that some of those are questions that. Uh, we have actually, you know, corresponded with insurance about over the years, and so part of. Our response is gonna be assembling what we already have in, uh, different files. Uh, to kind of put that all in a cohesive form, because it's a combination of liability issues and, uh. You know, in, insurance exposure as well as, uh, as legal, so.
One of the things you did mention, which is in her, well, I turned that up, it's important too, is we put limit to West Newbury residents on a priority basis, and that position. I think that was, um, we mentioned earlier on the process, like, I think that's a good decision.
Yeah, I would certainly advise you to keep it West Newbury residents on base if you don't have the numbers to make it.
Oh, I agree with that, yeah, I would make it home, but it would give them first priority if there's access products and.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, another. Point that we, uh, found out, fishing and game, that's the occasion to use for another account, um, made you offer differences, so you were experienced policy, I think it's. Under its final condition, um, you know, they scheduled them to come out, present them in color forms, and then. Uh, and that would also be made recommended, um, next steps is to integrate this information to a final framework. So probably less that we went forward or to renew any sales. Having this formalized into. Something formatted into. Those regulations, but it's very good.
Thank you for a good job.
Above and beyond.
It was a fun working, yeah, we worked well together, yeah.
Thanks, Jordan.
Freedom is an update on the potential for.
Okay, actually Chip's here, I think Chip is gonna pick up on this.
Hey, Chip.
Hi. Yes, we have, Rick and I have been working on a proposal, we were. Considering presenting that to the board, uh. Very shortly, but then we, uh, learned that we have a new. Energy and Sustainability Committee member coming who has special knowledge in the lighting area, so we thought we would. Uh, take one more month to let him come to our next, uh. Energy and Sustainability meeting to help us, uh, fine tune, uh, the proposal we have. Basically a no cost. Project for National Grid to. Replace our lights, um, on the streetlights. Save energy, um. Earn a rebate. Um. And so we would like, we would plan to, uh. To send you. An idea, uh, about a month from now.
I think Carson will be at our next meeting. Um, and, you know, I had a pretty lengthy conversation with him the other day, and, you know, he, he is. Some, you know, specifically relevant experience based on, he's been doing for his career, and so, um, that's good, you know, I, I think it's. Sounds like it's, you know. More or less in agreement with what we talked about, what we've been considering, but it's probably what obviously combines and costs.
Uh, National Grid rep said the main thing the town needs to do is choose what lamps it would like in terms of color, temperature and, um. And intensity. And so, you know, we've had some ideas, but that will be, uh, something we'll want to clarify with Karsten. Our meeting is, um. On the twenty-first of this month. So shortly after that. You will. Uh, have a one-page summary that we would like to give you.
Now, we've got, uh, the twenty-ninth. Of May.
Our meeting's the twenty-first. The Energy and Sustainability.
Yeah, our next, we're meeting after that is the twenty-ninth, so.
Okay, good. Great.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item is to view a draft promulgation.
Yeah, so, you can find it here, but, um, well, as I think I stated, when I sent forward to Angus, you know, it's pretty high level. And, um. It wasn't clear at the outset what level of detail we'd get and be realistic, unless somebody was out here and put in a lot more time. Then five thousand dollars can get you, um, this is probably as good as, as we could expect, um, and, and, um. But it, you know, it lays out a, a, a rough. Line to follow. The path to follow. To, um. Need to fully be guarded on. All, you know, the course in twenty-five years, really focused on the first five. And it's.
At the end, many of you have, but the town hasn't done um into conservation or or change your equipment. You you would make up for by um much of purchasing brands, you know, and your apartments. So you 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 it's you would help to create a vision of renewable capacity to offset whatever. So um, you know, I guess the question is where to start, you know, I mean, uh obviously, this is the first time this board has talked about it, has looked at it and talked about it. And um that might be there to, you know, to participate in the discussion. Um it seems to me as though it would be logical at this point to move forward with um energy audits uh on all these existing buildings that we want to look at, and it doesn't have to be confined to the buildings that we're reporting. Um uh I believe as, now, we're not currently a member of power options. The town could become with one V four pretty low cost. Probably picking out of the finger or something like that for a town with size. I don't recall. At one point, I had a conversation with with um uh Baron Camp and power options about that, and um I think that we could move for, you know, pretty pretty low cost. And um that would uh incredibly down, I believe, to no cost or in four no cost. I think that's a pretty good way to start. There were energy yards down most if not all the buildings back probably two thousand and tenish. Um long time ago. And we were probably able to affect that. And we made a lot of improvements since then. I think there's room for additional improvements and, you know, some improvements out of the pavement itself, from an economic standpoint. Um and you know, they lost a lot of resources.
One question I got on the table of the costs, um that doesn't count for anything in the state that you realize.
Yeah, their their cost structure to me is um it's it's shallow. It, you know, but again, for what we paid for this, I guess it shouldn't, we shouldn't expect a whole lot more, I think. Um you know, to have a more thorough job done. Um somebody needs to come on site, they need they need actually look at the buildings and understand all the systems, you know, all the systems. As well as the H O C, lighting system, all energy concerned.
So how would you envision this? Being, it seems like we didn't have to be that big. So it would just be a select board direction to P W or?
What are thoughts? I mean, I suggested before that I think the town should I think it's time the town has, hey, somebody, I'll use the visit officer, a sustainability officer, and it's the way it's done. But somebody who is responsible for sustainability would support that. And until you have that, I don't think you're really, we have to have it, it has to be, what has to be done. I mean, you know, the 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 committee, people on the committee could do that piece meal. But um the problem of the committee is that it's a committee, it's not a town staff. Um people are not here on a day-to-day basis, even if it's somebody who is here on contract. Um even towards the gate days of week, at least they will be, you know, regarded as the equivalent of staff. Um you know, and would have day-to-day interaction with people. Um you know, there there are a lot more tidbits and information that would be helpful, helpful to have. If you only can get it, you know, get to those places and, you know, the result, right now is what I'm thinking, right? What I'm thinking is right now, you know, somebody about it today. Forward, if I can ask them about it today, get shelter, be excited, and who knows when it will come back up again. So I I personally, I think that to move forward on this reasonably.
Right.
Yeah, so so actually, I guess the one thing we do have to do is at some point we have to accept the report. And it doesn't have to be done tonight, but uh you know, at some point we will have to pay a bill. We haven't been invoiced for this report yet regarding that other email address. I haven't had.
Okay.
Follow up.
Yeah, that's that's fine. Sure, that's fine.
Probably have to see a follow-up, maybe somebody else has received something and didn't know what to do with it. Um so um but um, you know, we haven't been invoiced, the town hasn't been invoiced, as far as I know.
No, not not that I'm worried.
Because we haven't, you know, it's a draft report, we haven't accepted it yet. And I said to them off the page, it's just.
Yeah, yeah.
Has energy sustainability commented on it? Are you satisfied with it?
Um there's, well, so Chip and I have seen three of them, and we've talked about it. We we've worked with the um the power options. The Energy and Sustainability Committee has seen it. Um there really was no um substantive feedback because, but you know, I I think we've covered most of the issues, maybe I'm wrong, but um I think we've covered most of the issues and questions that would come up. Again, it's high level, you know, we could go, as soon as I started to ask questions that were beyond their scope, they made it clear that, well, this is high level. And okay, um so, you know, it 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 gives you a general path forward.
So just in terms of process, I mean, I would look to you, that maybe to say, yes, this is true.
Okay. Okay, okay. Sure, that's the presentation.
Yes. We could do that.
Okay, yeah, so I guess at the next meeting, Chip, we could talk about that and uh and, but you know, presumably accept it and then move forward.
Good.
One other just thing, Wendy, in terms of implementation is to the extent there's, you know, obviously tangible projects that emerge from all of this, that the uh vehicle for that would be the capital improvement program and to get those, start to get those built in as identified projects and uh get them built in with with projected costs, and that way they can compete on, you know, equal footing with all the other needs. And and that, I think, is probably the best way to kind of uh hardwire it into the town's operation, you know, operational planning, capital planning.
Yeah, okay. All right, moving on to action, item to action, item A is request for water fire engineers reappointments.
One day I just uh uh I I was on their website the other day looking for uh, I wanted to connect on the fire study. Uh I noticed the last agenda was posted in January. Was that their last meeting or are are those agendas always posted?
Um and Mike always sends me an agenda when they.
Okay, there's just, there isn't any, okay, I it's just if you can look into that, because there were. Well, there, I think there, I only saw maybe two posted agendas in the last eight or nine months, so I just, if you can make sure that's, that's a good.
I will make sure that they're posting their agendas.
Yeah. I, yeah, I think.
Yeah, Ja- Ja- January, yeah, January twenty twenty five, July first was canceled, and then last one before that was last May. So according to the website, they've only met once since last May.
Right, I don't need approval of the town general obligation function.
So there's a uh uh Hilltop went out to bid, managed the bid process to to get the interest rates that you have uh in your packet. And um there are a lot of um, you know, votes and uh, you know, that you need to take and um documents that you need to sign. But there's a, there's a, uh Jim, you have the documents. There's a, there is a two-page um item of the actual vote and what the board has done in in the past when uh bonds have been issued is, rather than reading this verbatim, to if there would be a motion to approve the um, you know, motion as specified in this document. Um that would avoid the twenty minutes it would take to, I hate to sound loud, but in a nutshell, this is, this is, you know, the board is being asked to vote to authorize the sale two million eighty thousand um in general obligation bonds uh with a lot of caveats to that. And uh just for those uh listening, this is to finance uh actually three water capital projects that are already complete uh or either complete or substantially complete, the church prospect or water main replacement, the improvements to the chemical treatment building up to the well field and the replacement of the break-in water tank, uh all of which have been uh partially financed through uh short-term borrowing bond anticipation notes for the last several years. And uh what the board is being asked to do is to convert that short-term borrowing into long-term borrowing. Um and uh thankfully, you know, we we got a good rate and the church and prospect ended up, as you know, coming in under budget. So uh it is a, you know, it's it's a big cost to the water ratepayers, uh but given the scale of projects that have been done, uh at least church and prospect, that that was a, you know, financially came in well. I know what the, this goes back five or six years at this point, but with the water treatment building and the break-in water tank, both of those came in over budget, and we had to go back to town meeting, get further appropriation. So in the aggregate, you know, there's a lot of cost embedded in that, but uh the the church and prospects, you know, came in now at a at a good price, so.
That's a good question, but it's, you have the matrix of the four business names, Brownstone, and most of them. So that's a three point nine nine percent, most of the four point one eight. Realistically, three point nine, we get the better rate. When you look on the sheets, they talk about uh would pay you the first one is two million one hundred thirty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-eight. So that's the Gellie's capital, which is the third highest on the rate, that it will pay you two million one hundred forty-one seven sixty-three, which is actually less, so there's something off there that I don't get. Well, now they would be each. Was it they were in separate, something like, but if you look at that bid, you put like, okay, right here, it's two million one forty-five three thirty-eight, right? So the Gellie's number, when you go there, there's two million one forty-one seven sixty-three, which is exactly the same wealth. There's nothing about bonds, just a number down the line. If you go to lower rate, the total should be lower. But if you go to the next page down, Gellie's right there. Two million one forty-one seven sixty-three. Yet their rate is higher.
Uh yeah, I I can't just on the fly explain this um. Yeah, I mean, or unless you want to post a meeting for Monday, but but yeah, the, we we have, the the documents have to be signed by, I think it's May fifth, which is Monday, so.
So was it Hilltop that selected the?
Yeah, they they've prepared all of this. They're they're well, recommended, yeah, that's right, yeah.
I guess I was putting uh faith in Hilltop making you know, an educated decision. I I had noticed what Chris was pointing out and um it isn't a huge difference, but it is a difference.
Was difference of a thousand dollars that were twenty-year bonds.
But is this like a problem with the process of mobilization of things?
I just, I I it's not a question I can answer on on the spot and uh. Yeah, and I could arrange for Hilltop to be here um and, or or I could just be.
And again, I'm more worried about implications if for that fidelity, I don't, I I think there's a calculation, I don't think there's two one forty-one, I think that's all. If you're going purely by the interest rate, you'd have to go with I mean, the rate's clearly lower.
Isn't, I mean, the the vote is for Brownstone.
Right, but you look at the numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I I don't want, you know, this is a twenty-year bond, so I don't want you to, you know, I I and I I could arrange for the treasurer, for Hilltop. I I wish I had known about the question before tonight, otherwise I could have arranged for Hilltop to be there, but I'm not personally able to uh to speak to this.
They don't even have to be here personally, just explain.
Hmm, yep.
Thank you, man. I was dying to ask, I was really, I'm so sad.
Actually, I if I can repeat that, yeah, so. And Chris, I can follow up with you tomorrow to make sure I'm presenting your question exactly as as it is, because uh, yeah, obviously with the bids having received last, you know, a week ago today. I'm wide open. Could be. Uh, yeah, yeah. Well, and it's has, the documents have to be signed, I'm not sure what what time, but um but they have to be signed Monday, so I I assume the evening meeting wouldn't be.
I don't know, I'm retired again. Um so Jim, there's no problem with having a meeting on the town.
Just can't have a public hearing.
Just can't have.
And this will have to be without forty-eight hour, so it will be.
Well, and I think it's it's, you know, it was not foreseen, so it's, we're gonna.
If it ends up asking, you can post it, post it at seven o'clock at night, you can still make it.
Can't we just continue?
Well, this is to be signed and returned and returned, we have to send this stuff by FedEx. I mean, this is like very, once the bids are opened, which was last Thursday, and the reason for the timing, as you know, was so we would have a number for town meeting, so we would know exactly what the debt service was for made for April twenty eighth town meeting. So it's been a very tight timeline by necessity, uh but.
Is there a reason why we can't continue to meet?
Uh not, I don't think so. I mean, you tell us, but I I think if you continued it tonight in an open meeting to Monday at a at a time certain.
Yeah.
I think that helps with any potential open meeting issue.
And like Sunday, right?
That that would be great, yeah, that. That, that would be great. Yeah, that, that would, that's a better idea. Yeah. Anytime, uh, I might. Well, the, the budgeted debt service in the water budget is based on the terms that were, uh, but uh, you know, if it's a couple of bucks, you know, a relative couple of bucks, it's not an issue that's going to break the bank on the water budget for next year. Uh, so it's, uh.
Is there anything, any legal requirement for us to take?
Yeah, I just, I mean, honestly, I get, I get the stuff from bond council and, and the treasurer signs it and I, you know, I have my hands full, so.
Right.
Okay. Uh, next item is request for approval of the confirmation restriction.
Yeah, it's just a housekeeping issue. I was surprised, frankly, the state was requiring another vote, but here we are. We do have the document for signature after tonight's meeting.
I would say pretty much what's, what's on the agenda should be fine.
I do want to say that this session is not about the merits of the grant application and the select or issue of priorities and that resource and whether we can handle it. Typically, well, it's a requirement that the select board.
Hadn't, had we said it was going to be 7:00 PM before this would come up? I did, I, I had talked to Ross today. I did tell him it wouldn't come up before seven and I, I believe he had been. Yeah. Yeah, so if maybe we want to take up a, an item out of order. You could, or, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm not aware of anyone planning to attend other than, other than, yeah. Well, but I, I think, yeah, I think we told him seven, 7:30. Because it was going to be after. Thanks, bye.
All right, let's move ahead to item F, approval of draft letter regarding. Um, so should I just send people out? I mean, is email, they probably sent it to us.
Yeah, yeah. In this day and age, I don't think it's necessary. And, you know, it, with the appointment of Kevin Bo a couple of weeks ago and a three-year term in practices, you know, there's, there's some time for this to play out. I think it makes sense, yeah.
Does it make sense to request confirmation? Um, as usual, I was just in very end and reached through the nothing jumped off the pages.
Um, we can use item B. Number one. Um, I have my language, I, I think it started out in HVAC article, but then came into air fogging and, but it's still referring to HVAC. So I would just say that, um, I can send you this also. Um, just that we raised concerns about the lack of information on the rationale for replacement of the HVAC system. That there was stated concerns about air quality, she suggested hiring industrial about spaces, what we have to say about HVAC. She also noted that expansion of library spaces planned and any HVAC replacement.
You got a different set of answers.
On item three, this is on, um, and to be paid. Um, I think the idea of the five-year plan is not just for this, it's for all projects that um, and the walk through was not, you know, the five-year plan, that's just.
Yes, that's accurate, yep. Like a developing a five-year plan for O and M for for all town facilities.
Yeah, the time is based on.
Yeah, and I, I think the, uh, referenced, uh, more intensely evaluated really isn't the right framing because they are evaluated pretty intensely. It's, it's, uh, more a matter of kind of but methodical, stepwise kind of, and, and the things don't creep up on us, so.
Um, if you, yeah.
I can, I can work with you on that. I, I think I, I have a pretty good idea of, uh,
I just, I don't recall this. We're recorrecting the 2023 section. I have general discussion, uh, theme. Further evaluation of library building, again, this should be for your air quality assessment.
I'm going to say, like, questioning like the time we were talking to HVAC and that of all.
No, so on this particular one, this is when we request to go reserve fund transfer. And it should also say review of draft, reserve fund transfer. And the we weren't analyzing the planning control means that we're cheating. Chris, I'm looking for input from you on this in the description of the school board. And it sounds to me like, um, it says once these large high school age. And I saw that the plan was for the high school students to be of choice and then once they graduated, found it. This sounds like they're starting kindergarten. So I'm down like mine sound. Uh, got the last.
Yeah, it's just high school, so I'm correct. Probably work over there. That's all right. Because the issues are relevant and with, yeah, with the payments and stuff, you know, just at the meeting.
Well, I'm sorry, which, which sentence was that?
It begins in the, uh, in the seventh line, the middle of the seventh line down starts with the increased enrollment.
Oh, yeah, I got it. Yep.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see if they're non-issue, but because we might come back to that and say, hey, you said.
Yeah, I, I feel like losing it all together might not be the right resolution, because.
I know what you're saying. It says, once the lower grades come up, they fill in where the choice is going out. It's just not worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. We can go straight in.
Or, or rephrase it. I, I mean, is it rephrase or delete?
I'm happy with rephrasing.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Chris, you could, uh, just help. Jim, you could just send him that sentence and get it. Because, yeah, he, the superintendent definitely conveyed that point. And so it's just a matter of making sure the minutes accurately.
As these kids age through high school, that behind them will be filled by, you know, any more choice because the kids following up right at their slots.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I'll send you a draft first.
Three paragraphs after it starts the planning board's budget. The town planner, or near owner side.
I would say more like, you know, represented the, the proposed budget. No, she didn't. I, I did. Uh, she was attended to represent the, the planning budget.
I don't think it's accurate to say that it does compressions, like, to respond to the other thing. It's, it just.
It did say. It's part of what it does. The point is that if somebody's injured, you know, they may need chest compressions, but they may, may need also to have some, oh, yeah, they might, yeah, turn it, it did say it, so I think, yeah.
But I think, I think it's more along the lines of so you don't tire out your.
Yeah, yeah.
Attend to whatever needs of, of the version you then for food.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, necessary, yeah, but that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Those free up their hands, technically.
All right, my last comment is on next page, uh, reserve, reserve fund transfer and elaborate into air quality study.
Which one?
Uh, the last paragraph on part 49, the exit. She placed HVAC with my.
I, I mean, I think sure, yeah, the, the information's really informational. Um, it's a continuing kind of ball of wax. Uh, I think we've, we've done our part and then some in terms of, uh, helping this, uh, you know, property owner gain resolution. So once a, uh, further visit is, uh, scheduled and it sounds like in May or June, I'll make sure that either Butch and/or I will be there if, if anyone on the board is interested in attending, I'll be, I'll, I'll keep you a loop, in the loop, but, uh, it's something that, um, you know, I just want to keep you aware of because it's, uh.
So I, I have a comment about something that was suggested in here that they, um, that state dam safety, whatever they're called, um, might recommend withstand, um, that they might recommend, um, removal of the dam and I would think now I saw John Eric, it was part of the discussion and he would probably not like that. I don't think the town was numerated like that either. When we had that storm, I don't know when it was, where there was, uh, great fear and possibly even a tiny bit of actual backflow into the heart of show, lower heart of show. The fact that there was a, a body of water there that was still already, um.
Of, of known freshwater.
Of known freshwater.
Yeah.
Actually provided a significant buffer to accommodate and, and, you know, sort of reduce the, the risk from floodwater, you know, dirty water flooding from the American river. Um, so if you think about it, you know, there's water coming over the dam. There wasn't water coming over the dam. Over the lower jump dam. And there was small enough volume on top of the bill, the bill of water that, that that flow of the dam was sufficient to keep water from coming into the river because there was so little volume to be filled. If, I mean, if it had been empty because the dam wasn't there and the entire river, that where the river had filled the entire pond that's currently there, then it's probably like that contaminated water would have gotten. So, you know, I, I mean, you
That's a really great observation, yeah.
You might want to confirm that.
No, you're a hundred percent right. I remember that, that absolutely was, was.
I think, I think we have a reason because we're dependent, our, this town was dependent, you know, the water users this year get 30 to 40% of their water from new report. We should be concerned that that not be.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, yeah. Yeah, I can, uh, definitely communicate that and, uh, I'll reach out to, because while John Eric was copied, I don't know how much attention, I, I have no idea if this is something he's engaged in or not. I do know it's something Wayne is very knowledgeable about. And he, uh, he was been, he's been part of, uh, you know, at least one of the site meetings I had, but uh, I'll reach out to the, to them because I think, uh, to, to make that point jointly to the state would be much more, uh, effective, um, and, and make sure it's done technically accurately because they're the ones who who dealt with that situation. Yeah. Good. Thanks, Rick. Uh, May or June, uh, they were not specific about the date. Yeah, but, yeah, but that was, it turned out to a different, uh, kind of different purpose for the visit. Butch was, it was there for that.
So I just wanted to frame this conversation first. The select board is required to approve any grant. The reason for that is that grants are often not free money given, constraints of tax reporting, management, so forth. And the idea of the select board including is that we tend to look at town resources and county staff, look at other projects that are going on. Unfortunately, because of Vegas Backwood from the M V P grant application a couple of weeks ago, we did not have the opportunity to include those open speaking staff. In fact, we didn't receive a part of the application right at so it really wasn't my first to kind of did one to make sure that state resource. But given that the grant is due the next day, we went ahead and voted and both was in favor of submitting the grant. Point was made that that we've always just defined the grant. I personally feel like that's a bad approach for the town, so I don't like things to talk about perhaps with bond, perhaps. And in confirmation about just our resource. That's kind of the purpose of tonight's meeting. I think it's really a simple discussion, but I know as you submitted a letter to the board outlining your concerns, that there's anything additional that you want to add that that is related to resources.
Well, related to resources and and other points. Because I think you have to have this discussion of whether to withdraw the grant if that's impacted vote on your part to go in and withdraw something that the town's put together. So we should talk about the value of the grant against the resources that it will consume, I think. But I, so I will try to hit upon resources, but I also want to take another pass at why I think you shouldn't vote to withdraw this grant and the value of this grant. And I don't know what I was looking for last night when I came across this, but I came across this two thousand and eight hazard mitigation plan for the town of West Newbury, the two thousand and eight Merrimack Valley Natural Hazard Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. And as you know, the town puts together this plan, the region puts together this plan to remain eligible for funding for certain types of disaster. And the West Newbury plan in two thousand and eight included two thirteen items. And one of the couple of priority items on that plan was in small print, stabilize eroding erosive Merrimack River stream bank along River Road. Ongoing project, high priority. And it would be the responsibility of D P W, Concom, and the select board. And what was cited as funding source for doing this were for state and federal source. So, you know, flash forward to tonight, we're talking about the same thing. We're talking about a priority that the town has had before it for seventeen years now. A disaster-related priority. And it's had it on a list of things to do for seventeen years. So I know there are various versions of priority lists, but here's another version of a project that we've known about needing to take on for seventeen years. And and this past year, we made a real run at that. We took the the two thousand twenty four report and it was recognized back in March that we should build on the momentum of the two thousand twenty four report and move forward. And it was at a March eleventh meeting that you all had a discussion about this. And Angus had just been come fresh from the sidewalk. And they, you all were anticipating getting the results of the two thousand twenty four report and Angus explained that it will outline the risks to River Road, but it won't give us the the next step options. We'll we'll need to do more work to get that. And your comment that day, Angus, if you don't mind me quoting you, but it's it's so relevant to tonight's discussion is it's so evident how urgent the situation is. So it seems like having some resource to basically help process what we learned from the current grant and to come up with tangible next steps would be very helpful. And the next really critical moment in the timeline in moving forward, because you all then decided that night to, yes, have a placeholder warrant article for pursuing the grant. And then spend the next few months coming up with what they, what amount should that warrant article be to represent the type of the scope of the project that would be needed. So another key point was over the summer when we met with the D P W project manager, Christine Wallace and Angus, after Christine had spent a lot of time really thinking that about that question and what kind of project should be done. And it was at that meeting that we discussed the need for a comprehensive evaluation that we really couldn't take that twenty twenty four report and say, oh, that's where the work needs to be done. That hotspot could address in some kind of iterative fashion. The conclusion was, and the discussion at that meeting was, again, not, it wasn't the C C R C, the C C R C was hearing this from the town, that the approach to take would be to do comprehensive evaluation. So from that point on, it was coming up with the scope for that project, coming up with what it would cost. That led to the sixty thousand dollar warrant article to provide the matching funds. And really, the last the C C R C knew of this project is that's where we were. We were working on developing that scope to implement this project. And I think it's been suggested since then that, well, it's not really something that people support around town. Sure, the River Road people support it and the Coffin Street people perhaps, and the Ironwood Lane people and worse lane, which, by the way, that represents a lot of people. But it's not really something the town supports. And I just don't really agree with that. I think the town routinely at town meeting, when it comes to a project to assess what something will cost, whether it's feasible, before you spend big money on fixes, the town routinely votes to support those projects. In my thirty years of being here, the town has been sensed to support those kinds of assessments. That's what we did this year. We voted to support this project. And you don't have to live on River Road to support this project. I live across town, high on a hill. I'm not being threatened by what's happening at River Road. But I think at a fundamental level, I support I expect, my expectation as someone who lives on a public road is that the town moves to protect those roads. And when the situation is urgent, the town moves urgently at those roads. And you have to hold that urgency against the resource question in terms of the, you know, the benefit cost, risk benefit evaluation that you all are have before you. So, yes, I I understand that it will take resources to manage it, and there are several other priority projects. But the funding for this project is likely not going to be there and for West Newbury will not be as competitive for this funding as you all know, because this funding from the state will be under a lot of strain in the next couple of years as the federal government retreats from all sorts of programs. So, but I don't think you can look at this as what is the resource issue without holding equally all of these other issues? Where where will the money come from? The fact that a comprehensive approach is necessary has been warranted. The fact that the town doesn't have those funds and they won't have those funds. And and the fact that this is a seventeen-year-old at least priority that we haven't moved to the next step of actually sizing up what the alternative are. So I would urge that this discussion not be strictly about resources, but resources in the context of the risks out there and what kind of priority this really is and how long we haven't really done the actual next step of coming up with action, actions that can be taken to address.
If anybody's suggesting that this is not a priority, what what I am saying is, is this the right time? Right now, I would like to see us, I mean, this is mine, I would like to see us wait a year and build support in one direction. The fact that funding may not be here in two years also means that we don't have funding for maybe two years. Then alternatives now will not really matter. I don't know how you want to start this conversation.
Well, I I guess I'd like to say first off that saying that there won't be funding for to address what the alternative analysis comes up with two years from now. It's kind of right there.
I'm just responding to a statement that this might be here in two years, so we can't defer this right now.
We want you to do the study now, or it's not likely. We can't say, nobody much for certain what's gonna happen. And 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 the likelihood of similar funding being built two years from now and West Newbury having a shot at Wayne that far is pretty darn luck.
Why you say more based on?
Because I think the state is going to be under a lot more pressure financially because the federal government is pulling back from from anything having to do with with climate change. And and you know, one way or another, federal money plays into to programs like this. You know, the state is going to be more depressed for for buying funds to do this kind of work. And and there are going to be more communities who are looking for that funding. So you'll have increasing pool of funds and an increasing search for funds. So likelihood that West Newbury will have a shot, I think, is very low.
I mean, what, Rick, you know, what Tommy had turned to us, basically, what projects would you say, okay, we can't do?
Well, so, I mean, I made a suggestion earlier tonight that we should have sustainability officer. Well, you know, I can look at other communities around here. I'll use, you know, Newbury reported as an example, who, which of course is, you know, four times larger than but they have somebody who handles both sustainability and 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 resilience, you know, that that is part of their job function.
Yeah.
And that's not that unique.
That's one of my recommendations, wait for a year and hire somebody. Not be relying on our own engineer.
Well, you know,
It's not gonna happen in two weeks.
No, it's not gonna happen in two weeks, but it could happen if all pound be.
Right.
Which is
If I may, the one, I just want to quit on this funny point, because I made this in my written comments. And I don't really feel like it's landing with this group. But as time goes on, not only is there less state money, but there are more towns lining up for that money. And West Newbury, as an affluent town relative to other towns, is not going to fare well over time. And this year, in response to the expression of interest, we were told, yes, this is a good project. I think based on last year's project, they like working with us. They saw how well the town did with last year's project. We have that momentum. We have that relationship with them. But each year, there are more towns that are coming around to, yeah, let's get organized. Let's go after one of these grants. We did this early. We did it early just for that reason. We recognize that relative to other towns, you know, they may not, they may pass us over. So it, I I just think that part has not really been given to consideration of over time. This funding is not guaranteed. And and we have put all this effort into getting up to the starting line of this this year. Not now. The grant application is in. You know, the scope has been developed. And and they're looking favor. They gave us, you know, this looks like a good project, kind of indications. So I I just I I am doubtful that, you know, stepping back, taking more time. I I I I don't want to see, you know, other, you know, five years go by before this really, we take another serious run at this. And and we know there's going to be no federal money for this, so it's going to be up to the state. And it, and my guess is they're going to be moving money away from this program because they're going to have to fill critical services and other programs. So I just, I just don't think you should underestimate or overestimate the availability of funding in future years.
We gotta make it.
You know what? This is really we have a limited amount of time in this conversation. But let me have this, we'll discuss it in the
I would love to see.
We're talking about resources and how this could be managed. I see it being very challenging, not only for Christine, but for Angus. Who's under a permanent model pressure right now with all of the things that nobody else hears about, that are in executive session. I think this would be extremely challenging for him to because this would require management at a high level because of all the consultants involved. Better, you know, better than what we need for Dallas. And how how are we balancing that reality while it's changing?
Clearly, there's a lot of demand on this thing. It's time to log the camera staff. I think we need more help. I don't think we should let this continue to go. I, you know, none of us knows when something will happen. But I think we can be relatively certain that in some cases, something is going to happen under the road. An alternative to that is that it's not going to fix that. But an alternative in how it will put us in a better position to think about the fixes and and then influence. Begin to implement. But until we do that, we're not going anywhere. Problem continues to to proceed and we don't, we don't respond.
So what what would be, you think, taking a year to look into some of these other options, the stability manager or whatever, you think that would?
Well, I I then I think we lose our opportunity for the grant. And the grant will fund this.
And you don't think they would consider us next year?
Well, I I don't I don't have a personal, I I I have no idea what funding is going to be available, but I, what I, what I what I know now is that they have funding now and that we have reason to believe that we have a special hand. Next year, I have no idea.
Sure. So what projects would you say we would take off the table? Get a page school? Just start finding to do a comprehensive plan?
I I, you know, quite honestly, much as I support a comprehensive plan, you know, I think if if the comprehensive plan was pushed down here, that the world wouldn't end. I think the page school, we have to, we have to begin to move forward. You know, we can't, we can't ignore it. You know, every year there, we're kind of buying time, I I think. You know, for for some very expensive fix comes up or required fix comes up. But but as it is, I mean, we're, you know, we're several years out from you know, we're going to be sort of just keeping our head above the water with the page school until we're at a point where a major town decision. And, you know, I I don't know what the timeline is on that, quite honestly. I, you know, I don't know how this is going to proceed.
I think it will. This this is like obviously investors thing we're seeing. I feel a lot of it.
I feel a lot of it. The last meeting. Clearly said we would vote to put in the grant simply because it was due the next morning and the work was done. I said we would have to revisit it and see if the town had. Staff time and ability to do it. At one point Angus said. He expected over the next two years, this would take at least fifteen, fifty percent of Christine's time. I don't think that's too far off.
Just to be fair, that is not Christine's self-assessment. So I don't know how far you wanna go with all that.
One employee.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eight or ten is involved. And just another point, I got a whole thing written, but just for him. This should not be about the grant and money. This is about. Time and the hours and the ability to perform. We, we can get more money, we can fund it internally, you can never get more time. So the question is, is Wendy's asked a couple of times, if we take this, what else gets swept off the table? And at this time, this project will consume every number twenty, thirty percent, whatever. Of the town's staff time, what other project gets swept off? It's not just gonna be one, you know, I could, I could, I'd said before, comprehensive plan, if that went here, that doesn't hurt anything. Page school, probably a different story. But you've got, I don't remember what kind of funding, dozens of projects. Now those dozen, I'm gonna say fifteen to twenty or more are gonna get put on a back burner. And why are they lower priority for everybody else? Who's been pushing these projects forward? I think that this project would get done. Maybe the best first plan would be to, maybe we should have at this, this town meeting, been looking for this employee. Because without that, it's almost a who's gonna move forward, I don't think we have the staff to pull this off.
As this town, can you?
A hundred percent agree with the urgency of fixing where they're at, that's not the problem. And it's not even the funding of the grant. Don't forget the town, it's a hundred and sixty, now we hired an employee, we keep digging a hole in the economy, that's the least of the worries, it's the time and the ability to execute. If you take this grant, it's gonna. Either we're gonna do a sloppy job on the project or the analysis. And other projects are gonna fall, it just becomes a mess. I don't feel, you know, Wendy at one point asked. A while ago, how many hours to associate, we never got that. So I don't feel we've had a chance to make that bear. Analysis of going for the grant, I'm just frustrated with that.
Maybe, maybe, you know. We all place value in the, you know, Main Street border, you know, efforts that are, that are going on. You know, and we, we just voted, I mean, we, we, we put significant effort in, into that, but. I mean, is that something that can be slowed down to, to pretty have time? You know, I, if River Road fails. And it's. Pretty likely that at some point, River Road is gonna fail, and none of us knows when that's gonna happen or exactly where it's gonna. But if River Road fails, then we really have a major problem. You know, if, if, if houses are, are isolated, you know, if there were two failures and houses are isolated. You know, then, then the town has a major problem. If there's one failure and it's in the farm field, then we created a three mile long dead end road. And, and, and we've allowed the three mile, you know, and if it happens in the next two or three or four years. We can't fix that in time anyway. But the point is that until we start to try to do something. We're, we're not doing anything to prevent it from happening.
I don't think anybody is arguing that something has to be done, we need to reveal that, so I'm questioning, can we do that at this point in time? And I don't think we can, I don't think we can pull this off. That's. That, that's where I would say, I would love to look at other options for funding, whether it's internal or other grant programs, I would love to, to. Have a chance to digest the scope and try to, I, I think it could be cut by a bit. So that isn't such a management to me.
So I'm, I'm not. I, you know, so the scope and management demand issue, I, you know, I hadn't dissected the scope. To say, you know, what would change, what should change, what would we change if, if we weren't using state money? But I think. That these stuff that we might consider to be, if I was in community. It's actually a fairly small portion of your goal range. And, and in fact. Excuse me? And time wise. And, and, and in fact, a, a fair amount, the way that it's structured, if I recall correctly, a fair amount of that work. Will be largely done by members of the committee.
But which is another issue. Because the committee is not important. And managing a committee or a consultant or anybody else, that puts a lot to man. You know, it's free labor, you self-manage, the same with this, you know, the living shoreline group, that's all about high level talent and that's great, but, but the talent for you has to be. I think it just really ramps up. Not to say it's not great work and it's fun stuff, but, but we don't have staff to manage.
If you're willing to get the gun. Isn't an opportunity to negotiate that with the state at the time, if you're ready to solve and reduce the funding, but you can't really hold.
Possibly, I just think that that, that's just getting the handout, we keep doing this, you know, town meeting.
Not if you can reduce staff time by fifty percent. You know, if you can maintain some of the funding, get rid of some of the stuff, you don't want. I, I agree of believing in two years, but that's a fun more probably to finish it up, but it won't be a more powerful way, I don't know.
I don't think this conversation would be any easier if we entire one of them ran and, and debating scope, state could say. Yes to this, no to that, I just. I feel personally that we shouldn't strain the state a lot, we have a tendency to reduce the scope, we shouldn't, we're right up the front.
We got the conversation. We need to get it, is, is there somebody? Talk to with the state, the call and say, we still like the funding. Suspect we don't have the capability of staff to do it, that we accommodate the grant around our capabilities.
Angus, what's your, can I advance that process question? Let's just let us know.
I mean, I'll offer my opinion, I don't know if you, you might have knowledge I don't have as a former state employee, I, I think the door would be open, I don't know what kind of. I know there's strict restrictions between when they issue the R F R and when you submit the grant, there's kind of a cone of silence. Now that we submitted the grant, I don't believe that's in place. Uh, we do have a very good, uh, you know, dialogue and working relationship with the M V P Grant Office dating back several years. So, you know, I don't think there's any reason we couldn't have a conversation. You know, obviously, we're losing our conservation agent, that's something we could not have foreseen, we do expect to get that filled, I think we're gonna have probably a great new agent, but there's a learning curve and. But, you know, I think, I think we can have that conversation, I don't know where it would yield, but I would be happy to, you know, see that happen.
Very quick. So the process, should we receive the grant is, there's a, we meet and we accept the grant. And we accept the final budget for the grant. And there are kickoff meetings and discussions about the grant, so in my written comments, I suggested. We could look at shifting resources to a managing consultant that would manage more of this grant. Uh, more aspects of the grant, you could say, we budgeted X, we wanna move it, we wanna move it more X here and, and less here, and that could be part of the discussion, but. You know, until you, we don't even know what value the, the state would give you for the grant, we, you ask for six hundred and something, they may say, you know, it's only really a four hundred thousand grant though. We wanna fund and we don't wanna fund this, this and this, so you don't know any of that. You won't know that until they award the grant. And then your opportunity to trim the grant or talk about how it could be done efficiently would be in those kickoff meeting discussions. But I agree with Angus, it's not, you don't have that opportunity now already there.
But you got the conversation, Mike made a point there, rather than reducing the grant, can you just, what you say, reallocate the funds, say we'd like to hire a. Person to run the program, shift a hundred grand to that component?
I think you could, I, my guess, and, and this for discussion, but I, I mean, what Liz outlined is exactly what happened the last time, you know, they awarded the grant. In that case, they made substantial changes, uh, you know, the timeline, we applied for a two year, they squeezed the one year, that, that manifested in kind of a Zoom meeting that, okay, how are we gonna do this? And what items are gonna change or, or go away? Uh, so I think if the grant was awarded, I do, I do very much think there's a time to then revisit scope. Typically, at least the last grant, that was at the initiative of the state. Of, of, you know, compress, compressing the timeline and, and other things had to be adjusted, in this case, it, it might be both, they might have their things and we might have ours. Hey, when we applied, this is what we included, based on, you know, changes, I, I think the suggestion of having more of a, you know, consultant project management, that is more overhead, that's more grant money. But I think if, if that's, if that's the option relative to not going forward, that might be a good option to consider. And, and it all comes down to, if you get a good consultant, that can work great. Uh, if you don't, that's a problem, but that, that comes down to how, what's your vetting process and, uh, you know, I will say that in the, in the weeks, in the run up to the grant filing. Uh, we did all this on a very tight timeline, but I think that, uh, and I will give significant, uh, you know, credit to, to Christine as well as to the, you know, huge amount of volunteer work to underpin that, but. The circulation of the then draft scope, but, but pretty close to final draft. To the, uh, six different qualified consulting firms, and we had those four different Zoom meetings, four of them kind of picked up the ball and met, met us on that. Those led to, you know, not just like very substantive Zoom meetings, but follow-up correspondence where they sent us reams of, of really good information, including on budgeting and what. Some of the things we had in the scope, they felt what their consultant had on those might cost. So that was incredibly valuable input, unfortunately, because we were on such a tight timeline, we were getting that input. You know, seven, six days, four days before the grant was due, so we were just processing enormous amount of information from lots of different angles. Uh, but I think that that. I, I guess my point is, we, we did that partly because we needed that input from the private sector as to what is the. Uh, cost of the things that we've outlined. Uh, but also to, uh, you know, we said, we said right in there to all of them that if we get the grant. Whether you reply now or not, we will send you an R F P, we, we made a commitment that we would put this out to bid, even though as engineering services, a case could be made, you could do a no bid award. We've been very clear from day one, we would do a bid process, so we would have an opportunity, if we get the grant, to, to thoroughly vet. You know, make sure we, we did get a good consultant. Uh, and just as we've done with other major procurements, uh, the bid, the bid specification set out very clearly the process we use, whether that's a. The chief procurement officer making the selection or a working group like the page study, we set a, a kind of. Multi-disciplinary working group, something similar could happen here, so. Uh, you know, this, it's really, it's, it's really how the board wants to handle it. I think if, if your direction is to, to not do it, that's what we'll do, and we'll put our best effort toward alternate approaches. If your direction is to stay the course, that's what we'll do. If your direction is to, you know. Uh, if we get the grant, do some horse trading and only accept the grant if we get it to where we feel it's, it's realistic and manageable. Uh, that's what we'll do. Yeah.
I don't know how the grant is funded, could you increase their scope to take on all the work?
It all depends on what the state approves, because what, part of what makes the M V P grant specifically so challenging is that Schedule B. Where they put the burden on the grant applicant, the municipality, to set out very specifically, and that's why we had to do that, that attachment B. We didn't choose to do that, we had to do that, and it, instead of saying, hey, we want all these things, we think it's gonna cost six fifty, whatever the number. Uh, we had to say, we think survey is gonna cost this, and, you know, delineation's gonna cost that, public media's gonna cost this, and the boat trip's gonna cost that, we had to itemize that. I've been saying for years, I, that's, I think that's a flaw in the state agency, lots of state agencies, they put that burden on municipalities, we're not the consultants. You know, I wish it was not as prescriptive, but it is, and we had to do that, therefore, any deviation from that has to be approved by the state. I think if we proactively said, hey. You know, we, we hadn't set this out with the expectation that a town staff member would be the project manager, which is what we did. But based on various factors, we would, we would really want or need to re-scope it to where the consultant team has an overall project manager. That would definitely necessitate, you know, changes to, to what money's going where. I think it's a conversation we could have, the state could either agree or not. Uh, and if they didn't, we could, we could accept that or not, so.
So, in part, how in terms of.
I agree with that, yeah, yeah.
I think part of the issue here is that there's not been a lot of that. Perhaps because we're on it, you feel like, you know, representing more or updating more than, I feel like I've made. My concerns about this, so no, all along, I don't feel like they've acknowledged in the first. And that, in terms of. So if we wanted to pursue that, I, I would wanna start like right now, come to an agreement on what scope both the slight water and the searing steam. You know, would get behind if we were to order the grant. By the way, I think it's just gonna protect like this conflict.
I think it's really tough to say you gotta turn down six hundred thousand with a grant. That's even more difficult to sit there and throw the sword on the back of the town employees. So if you can slide funds together with consultant. Now, I know you said we gotta get in the path, I would still have a phone conversation upfront, say we're going to. Combat with this plan, whether they want a pre-award or post-award, and then negotiate with them.
I just don't know if the cone of silence that I referred to earlier is still in place, or like, it might be that, but, but that's something we could sound out and say, we'd like to have a conversation, if that's not appropriate at this time. Well, you know, but, but just, yeah, they, they will, but yeah, and I would be very.
Say, at what point would it be appropriate?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What timeframe we have to. Yeah, I, I can see why they wouldn't do that, because, you know, everybody's supposed to be operating with the same set of goals.
Yeah, and they wanna evaluate what's in front of them, the written submittal is what they'll evaluate.
You should probably recall this, and Christine was in that meeting too, when we met with them about the process. We, we put those questions to them, should we get it? Uh, could it be less than we asked for? Yes, it could. Could we, could there be items that we have that you say you don't want? Yes, you know, would we be meeting with you? Yes, there will be a kickoff meeting, we're, we'll discuss. And, and, and the town signs the contract, so it, you know, they, you don't sign it, if you don't. If you don't wanna do it as it's finally. Uh, laid out in terms of what the requirements are.
So is the question also asked, can the town change what? You probably didn't ask that, but I'm wondering if it all comes out.
I, I think, yes, I do think it goes that way, because they, they, it's a conversation, right? What can you do? Oh, oh, we made this adjustment, how will that, how will that impact the rest of the project?
Yeah, I think last time.
They can't just line item things out and without, you know, hearing back how that's going to impact the project on your end. So it, it, it's a contract, which means you're both, you're both saying yes or no to it in the end.
Yeah, I think last time there was some compromise in the adjustments that were made, um, and I don't recall specifics, but does that sound right?
I wasn't in on your last con, contract discussion, but I, I know this from administering grants, uh, from the state.
Yeah, I mean, my, my take on that would be, I, I think there would be an opportunity to move within, as long as it's within what, within the scope of what we presented, to move from here to there. You know, we couldn't say, oh, we said we want an apple, now we want a banana, but, but if it's all within, you know, kind of just like town meeting, within the four corners of, of the grant, so it's not, it's still an alternatives analysis, it's still. Fundamentally, a lot of existing conditions and, and really, like Liz said earlier, you know, digesting whatever source, but that was actually pretty well formulated, digesting this. whatever the source, but that was actually pretty well formulated, digesting this enormous amount of information from the last grant and helping not not just those who've been directly involved, but the community as a whole come to grips with this. Uh, and really make informed decisions, that's fundamentally what it's about and would be about. I think, uh, what we're talking about now is uh, potentially looking at out, uh, devote more of the great grant resources toward basically contract management, managing the public process. So for instance, some of the assumptions we made were that, just as we did last time, where we kind of did and and by we, I definitely include the volunteers as well. Collectively, we did the effort of making the meetings happen, getting the word out, getting the community, and and the consultant could pretty well just show up and give their presentation. Having spent, you know, eight years of my career in consulting, it's it's not always like that. Sometimes the consultant is also doing the flyers and the outreach and the getting, in our, in my experience, that's, I think it's better when the town does that, because we have our finger on the pulse of the community and we can do it in a way that's more relevant and and not like, you know, and again, it depends, if you get a good consultant, there's people who can do that really well. Others come in and it's this cut and paste job, and it's like, it can actually alienate residents if it's handled poorly and then that falls back on, so it's, uh, but you can have consultants do that. We we had kind of scoped this with wanting explicitly and wanting as much of the resource to go toward the kind of hard skill things like engineering or survey that we do not have in-house, so and and we had in have envisioned that that we would do more of the soft skill things like you know, organizing and so that the consultant could just kind of work on their work product and come and give their presentation, not burn a lot of billable hours at consultant rates doing things that we have the the skills to do, because none of this is about skills, it's as Chris has said a number of times, it's about capacity and time.
No. Sounds to me, what I've heard from everybody, the state is pretty much on board with the program, question, we've already gone through the
They've been very favorable, yeah.
Sounds like it's favorable look at the grant, so let's I think if you're sitting there and then you come in and say, we don't have the ability to execute this properly, would like to be able to look fun, I don't see why that's a negative, you know. Rather than taking the grant and blowing it, that would be really problematic for the state, so I think I don't see why they wouldn't look at it favorably. And did we, I think initially, there was no requirement to put up the ten percent, we did it.
That's correct, that is correct, yeah.
That again, too, contributing, it's not, it's not a money thing, it's about the ability to perform on this.
Yeah, and and just to be clear for those who don't come to these meetings week in and week out and see what we do, it's really at least in my opinion, it's not as much about the ability or whether we could do it, it's about what else will suffer, what else will get pushed off, but I you know, I don't want anyone to come away from this thinking that the town doesn't have the capability, it's the capacity. And and that's where you guys know the breadth of issues. Yeah, and it's in tonight's packet and they can pull it up and look at it, so it's, you know, and and right, and and you know, so it's, that's, that's the issue, is what else would suffer if it's not uh, you know, if it does, uh, fall heavily, it's not, can we do it, it's what else? You know.
But you can't do it conjunction with the other projects, that's
Can't do everything, and we've been, we have honestly been do doing everything for, you know, the seven years I've been here, and, uh, and something does need to change, because, you know, the day after town meeting, I worked a seventeen hour workday. Uh, I mean, I routinely work those kinds of, I mean, that was, but I routinely, week in, week out, work at least one or two fourteen to sixteen hour workdays, and that's year round, and that's seven years, that's not like episodic, that's sustained, you know that. People probably don't know that, may they may not believe that, but, uh, you come by any Saturday, I'm here forty out of fifty-two Saturdays a year, so it's just, you know that, but something has got to change, because we we can't keep Right, yeah, yeah, and we have people who are are now having to work above budgeted hours, work overtime hours that's not budgeted, because that's the only way we can keep up with everything we're doing, and there are things like, you know, there's reference to litigation and you know, we do have, we're in the middle of discovery on litigation on a matter that has cost thousands of hours. And we have many hundreds ahead of us, probably thousands ahead of us, and these are the kinds of things that have to get done, come hell or high water. Pun intended, you know, and and so, um, there's no tangible, it's not something people see, but it it has to happen and we're, you know, we have to meet court orders to to provide documents, it takes hundreds of hours to do that, so. Yeah, we're in mediation on union contract, we're negotiating at this moment, three separate union contract, I mean, these things take enormous amounts of time. And they take enormous focus on detail and, you know, as we see from everything we do is 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 detail work, so to juggle, you know, a hundred different things and and pretend you're not gonna have things slip through the cracks is 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 lunacy, and you you talk, you know that, that's what you're saying, so, yeah, but
I would propose that the CCRCC and SLA would meet and try to come up with finding a agreement on what the story would look like if we were to we can't get any of that Uh, meeting next Monday.
The next one here is one day after.
Oh, the second one, say, you're right, the one after, yeah, second one, say, this round is
Or, I mean, you guys meet the next night, do you wanna, uh, maybe they meet and kind of get on the same page and then everyone meets the next night at a regular board meeting, or? Okay.
Yeah. I I can make that work and put it on the chair of the
Your honor, you'll be there.
I will.
Reach out to you in terms of coordination.
I just wanted to do this quickly enough so that we can come to a resolution. So we bought the grant without, you know, they don't wanna be in a position of
Well, the thing is makes the call now, and that's the one to see that sort of alert on that road.
Yeah. All right, we we took a million to the phone.
Uh, my only point was, is that I think the only project that's done, and it was even closer to probably middle street, right?
The trend.
And I have looked at documents there, two thousand nineteen estimate versus two thousand twenty-three. I don't even know what the actual costs are in some sense. In just a four-year period, so there is a a consequence of the lag. Well, you know, that sixty thousand match, that turned out to not be required. That could be money that could be used to cover expenses of the project.
Thank you.
For the next item, it's a one on lady challenges.
Uh, no, uh, it's not, it's in a, I know it's not a prior factor, but I don't know what they, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'll give Congress a look at fifteen court on leave, um, the utilities that are in question are adjacent to the property.
So I understand that when you purchase the property, you went out of the air business.
It'll survey your property, apply it in a portion, that was twice, never done that.
Yeah.
I have spoken to all three utilities since our last meeting.
Yeah.
They have all stated that I do not hold a distribution box, all three. Um, I can tell you that two I don't have an account, it's actually Verizon, so they stated that that is not dedicated to my house, it is a distribution point for multiple houses, uh, be on the street, so it's not
So what, that's the
So they have stated, that I talked to their engineering department today, they're pulling all their paper, yeah, the above ground piece of it is ten feet from the line, from your state. So it's not even close.
So I sent this to to our national grid, I don't know if you would have seen that.
So the engineer said that they would evaluate the piece, and they would come up to see if there's um, built for a permanent yard, so they're going to do their own evaluation.
Okay.
But I can tell you that, you know, you can see the white dot that's standing there, you see your line, that's my power distribution point, that is my it's ten feet from here. So if there's something underground, I can't see it. The other piece is actually extended, they were here today, they stated that it's on the high pressure path, the high powered pad, it shouldn't even hurt, but it's still also on the other side of the line. The only one that's not, is one that I don't have an account, so I had to call their public relations office and say, hey, greet from the town, what can you do for them? They said, well, it's actually not yours, it it there's several on the street, there's hours telephone for multiple houses for your
Right.
This is Verizon, they say that they even sent an engineer out tomorrow to evaluate it to see if they could rework the network so that they could do a little something, but I don't have an account with them, they wouldn't take my call until I called their public relation. I can state that as you're the one that wanted, that you could call them, but they may be copper underground, they said that at some point someone had a full copper in those because it's thirty years old, and people use homes with copper. Um, but from my perspective, I'm done lying, you don't just try to be compliant with it.
Yeah.
I don't respect the bill for some, it's one I do patrol version two, I'm still gonna do those for the grid, another grid said that if it wasn't built properly, that they would take steps to address that, and me and, but they wouldn't comment on what that was until someone said that, well, someone had a chance to look at it from an engineering perspective. But I can tell you that, in standing there in the street, it's ten feet from the property.
Okay. So I guess the document that we found from prior owner
Mm-hmm.
Was that national grid or was it Verizon, was it, did it just say?
You're talking about that that outgoing letter that was sent, uh, in two thousand seven? I do not recall, uh, if if we if, uh, yeah, but if you can see when this was, because it was in a packet, you know, last few months. Actually, it might not.
So, I mean, you can see where where the line is, obviously, I've probably seen him out looking at it, putting the fencing in.
Yeah, because you've got two stakes in there, so identified, two of the three boxes are in line.
Yeah.
One is on the left, and one on the left is Verizon. They went right on it with the I don't know what's in it. But I did what I could to try them.
Yeah. So I think the the decision we were looking to make was if if your utilities are on top property, whether have you moved them or enter into some kind of use, you think that would allow you to leave them there, but when you sold the house addressed, so I I think those are our two options for anything that is on the top property, which sounds like
Yeah, I don't care if you rip that box up, there's nothing that I'm doing, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I do not want to have to agree to one, you know, and I'm doing what I can be required.
Yeah. So I think the plan right now is to run the fence along like property lines up, which that is, do you recall?
I don't recall.
There's there's no setback, but it's just being
It was gonna be close, yeah.
So that was run rate for that area, the split rail rents is attempted to go right to Well, I mean, part of that is to protect you, so when people walk through your door.
I already have a problem with that.
Okay.
John, John literally had dogs running up to his back door, and people going, oh, I didn't realize this wasn't, you know, probably you're you're six feet up, and they fucking be public.
Yeah, well, that's that's the reason for the split rail and stuff, I mean, I think that would be aesthetically, you know, not subconscious, but, um,
And that'll pretty well find where where your land is and and, you know, it'll it'll show so that it's clear to somebody who does use the area. You gotta be within the facts.
But I can tell you right now, like, John literally, we see with his picture, has people that walk out right through here, regularly, right across his lawn, then walked down his driveway, you know, or last week he had people on his back patting him. Fortunately for me, it's not as easy, but I still have the same problem.
Well, also, once once there's a defined trail by, you know, once Reamel has their trail there, then then
I can tell you, well, because last week, there was someone that was literally walking right down my property line, right through the middle of my property, right through the middle, down over the stream with the dog, and walked all the way back down the the other side of the street.
Wait, I'm I'm just out of curiosity, I mean, where?
Roll down the street, to the stream? Yeah, they walked literally right down the middle of my property, over that stream, decided to walk down the street, I lost him behind the next door neighbor, but, and then John had people in his back pack.
Well, that's that's a separate issue that will have to, you know, continue to monitor and address.
I thought that was like a piece of wire, this is all similar to what you did. But as far as, you know, rectifying the situation that existed, it's been there for thirty years.
So what was your preference? You said you wanted to have it moved.
You have to have Verizon move it, right? It's not his problem.
The means to confirm with, um, Verizon.
I think it's more with you as well, once they show up, they said they called me, I never there with an engineer. I'll share that one.
I mean, if if you'd like, we'd, we, you know, I could have someone meet you out there, I think Butch would be happy to just, if if that's helpful, if you would like him there.
As soon as like, yeah. What 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 other house is connected to that box?
We're gonna find out, I think.
All right, I mean, I feel like that's
Yeah, it's not his, not his problem, so, yeah.
Well, I just, I'm concerned because Joe Rocko, who's our rep, said that there was, um, electrical stuff on that property that belonged to him. We still have to sort that out.
Well, I told you, I could buy it, look through the light, it was a cable, so.
Well, I mean, I, he had the mind, the maps, he looked into the town, you know, took him two days to go back to so, I will follow with him, um.
Yeah, so, you know, GIS is not perfect, and, you know, I had a recent some, I still need to resolve with with with, um, national grid, and, you know, even if they acknowledge that, you know, GIS is not always perfect.
Well, he actually has blueprints of the
Yeah, there's something, I mean, do you want me to pull it out of my inbox? Because it's, I'm seeing, it it's
That was his original five.
Yeah, the one from February, yeah, yeah, if, uh, let me just start to share here. Think this is, yeah, this is what you're talking about, right? Yeah, I mean, this this drawing is, uh, it it looks like Well, you know what, okay.
H stands for handles, that's actually a access port that would probably
So, um, bear with me a second, I, this is interesting, and I'm just thinking out loud, but I'll just, I'll just share what is coming to mind, because, so, uh, several years, four or five years ago, when we were working on the acquisition of the Coffin Street property, um, it came to my attention that the then GIS layer had an inaccurate representation of the configuration of the right of way. And specifically, it showed kind of the right of way, going to a cul-de-sac, and then generally continuing. In line with with this, but when you pull up the actual definitive subdivision, you see what what I will show, what you can see here. Where you have kind of the right of way, then the bulb, and then it'll lower. And this was corrected, because if I got the actual definitive sub subdivision plan. Pointed this out to MVPC, which handles our GIS data layers, sent that to them so they could get the accurate right of way. My point being, up until three, four years ago, the the data layer that we had was incorrect. And as I'm just at a glance looking at this one, this is closer to what we used to show than what in fact, so. Right, right now, this is showing that handhold within the right of way, if their base plan is incorrect. And I don't know if that was a change in the subdivision plan from maybe there was a modification from when it was filed to when it was approved or the. But there was some glitch where it was not accurately represented, and it was off by a significant, it was a. Ten to fifteen feet, it was not an insignificant um issue, and and just at a glance, this is looking more like. Yeah, there were the driveways completely different in this drawing than than in the in in reality. Both both the driveways, actually, if you look at the Neil driveway as well, it's completely different.
Yeah. I've never seen the same. Actually, like, this is my electrical.
Yeah, so that's that's uh, that's interesting. No, we know exactly where the property line is, we had a survey out that, we actually had two surveyors out there, we know exactly where it is. Yeah, it's just and and the mapping that was was inaccurate, and that was actually brought to our attention after we had it surveyed. And we said, that's not, yeah, anyway, that that what you see here in the mine map is. This is probably the most accurate parcel boundary in town, because it's based on an actual survey that was conducted in the last few years. Definitely. Yes, yeah, well, the dick safe was done, yeah, but but you're right, now that needs to be, yeah, confirmed if. Yeah, and I can I can dig out of my records, because at at the time this came up, I wrote it up in detail when I sent it to MVPC, and I attached the relevant documents. And 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 they went ahead and corrected the layer, so I would have that somewhere in my. In my files, and I could send that, uh, we could send that off to National Grid and ask them to reconcile that against what what is shown here. Because actually now, I mean, this doesn't, I don't see why it would, but this also doesn't show the. Change in the right of way, I mean. They might not care, because their utilities don't go that far, but but it's not an accurate map.
So that was from the utility right there?
Yes, yep.
So I mean. Um, so you give you notice on Dino and. Now, the one tree that we divided wide is not.
Yeah, I I had thought that that was uh regulated on the scenic road uh act, but there's a minimum tree caliper. Uh, that's what ten inch, and and it's less than that, so it's actually not uh not governed by that.
Do you know if the sequence is the trail first or the parking or?
Still working that out, I think, well, the most recent correspondence with with Dave Rimmer, which is in the packet, which from just in the last week, week and a half is. Uh, that they would, they, I believe he said they intend to kind of. Do the trails internal to the property and kind of work their way backwards to this, uh, but the the idea all along is that there is that there would be some. Uh, coordination and the timing, so, because we don't want to put pardon there if there's no there there. Uh, so we want the trail, but we don't want the trail, you know, we would, we want it to be in sync, so. And same with the fencing, which, as you know, is under contract, but we haven't, you know, we haven't scheduled that, nor will we until we. Have a a clear uh kind of timing in alignment with Green Bell's work and the and the parking. The the fencing was a little under ten thousand dollars, that was actually funded by uh out of the. Uh, federal ARPA funds, so it wasn't any uh local uh taxpayer funds and uh. The cost for the actual parking is um the crush stone is stuff that we stockpile. Uh, that's not to suggest it didn't cost money to buy, but it's on, it's not something we're purchasing specifically for this, it's something that. Uh, the highway department uses in their regular operations, and then the labor and uh equipment with is is. You know, it's staff time and it's uh, you know, ta- public vehicles, but it's not direct expenditures, the only. Direct expenditure the town uh is making is the fencing, which is uh was funded through the ARPA. Yeah, if you want to shoot me, you have, I think you have my cell phone, or if you want to shoot me a text at once you have a time. And and uh, I know I've I've got a number of meetings tomorrow morning, but uh I can give Butch a heads up and. If if it would be helpful to have him there, I I know he would be happy to be there. Okay.
Yes.
What you said today, was that just another?
Yeah, that's, yeah, so leave on the the last one, yeah.
Alright, so let's start with the Alzheimer's.
Alright.
Uh, Ethan, I'm not, I'm not sure if you heard, but we're the the board's now getting to the uh special event permit for the Alzheimer's. Ride to NALZ.
Sorry about that, um, I wasn't able to hear that.
Yeah, that's fine, that that we've been getting some issues that I guess the audio was not as good tonight as, yeah, but we'll have to look into that.
Yeah, no, sorry, I couldn't join in person, I'm uh currently at an event in Texas and wish that I was home.
First question, uh, the applicant should be in town, we should, when it says the date and time, we should always be asking, very heavy with events. And two for me would be about signage, like on almost all these events, we need to have. Free race notification, so little PDC signs placed up.
It means the same day and expect.
Expect the race from four, you know, from eight in the morning to twelve, we have a mistake, a race.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm not sure here, again, we missed, we handed it off, but instead of just saying location sign, description, I think, question, you are required.
I, again, I apologize, I wasn't able to get all of that um. To recap, it was a, you want signage out beforehand as a notification, correct? Okay.
I I feel like three days. So we're asking that signs be posted three days before the race.
Okay.
With the date and, you know, times that traffic will be impacted, we've had residents blocked into their road and their driveway not being able to get out, so they just want to plan ahead.
Okay. No, we can, we can definitely do that for you, um, also, just to clarify for our event. Um, we are completely rules of the road, um, so there will be no blockages.
Last comment, this is not on the applicant again, it's on the town, it's gonna be better. Uh, we have to have a state that's what we want for a map enclosed. Uh, this map doesn't even have street names on it, so just trying to figure out where the course is going, but. Look crazy, but I do appreciate, but I'm going to police television, let's say, get their locations.
Yeah, so, right, that's the one that Matt sent out after the. Okay, so Matt sent us an email and it says saying that he had a baby.
It was, he was, he was out Tuesday for, so I I was given what. I was told was. I know, no, I understand, yeah.
We'll have to give them the standard what we want, so.
I I actually have just one one note, just I I went over the written direction, and I think there's one mistake, which um. If anybody was following them, it would create a problem, and that's. At at mile twenty-three point five, where it says right on the Bachelor Street, I think you want to go left on Bachelor Street at that point.
Correct, that's a, that's a left, um.
Well, okay, well, it says here, right on the Bachelor Street. Twenty-three point five. It shows right on the Bachelor Street, and it should be a left. If if you're going on Mobile Street.
We'll have their eligible race day, so.
Yeah, okay, well.
Well, but it's a, yeah, I feel I feel you, I don't know for this event or something else, but I think you've made this point before.
Follow roots, so I understand where the root is. So that, I mean, that's just a minor point, I I think that's helped. I mean, if if you think I'm wrong, and 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 you conclude that, that's fine, but I think I think there's an error there.
Make a motion to include the Alzheimer's Association race for June fourteenth. Uh, with the addition of uh free race signage three days in advance of the event.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your time in Texas again.
Thank you, I'm I'm ready to get back to mass.
Alright, the next one is the ALS.
Hi Kevin.
Hi, who are you? So we are asking for permission to ride through uh West Newbury on Saturday, the twenty-first, between ten thirty and two thirty. Uh, we will put up signage around a week prior, I also had sent over a sign that um. Town's individuals will be able to see what we're riding through, and there's also a QR code attached with it, so if there's anyone who. Um, wants to see the entire route for our entire day, they have access to that. Um, and we will have around eighty-four riders, including marshals, who will be on the road with our bikers, making sure they are following all the rules of the road. Um, and at the end of all those individuals coming through, we will have our takedown crew coming and taking down any signage that we put up, so any zip ties, staples. Signs, wrong way signs will all come down at the end of Saturday for you all.
Yeah, I like the sign, the, you know, the patients on it, but.
Understood, I will make a note to have roadways on all of them, just so that y'all have a clearer direction.
We know what it is, I can follow it, you know, it takes a little bit, but.
Yeah.
It is actually a question for Jim, is is the. Map we receive color and we scan it black and white, or is this the quality of the map that we receive?
Uh, so that's the quality of the map I received, that particular map, but I highlighted the yellow.
Oh, you highlighted the, yeah, okay, so uh, yeah, I'm just gonna put up Kevin on the share screen, so this is kind of what the board has in front of them.
I'm so sorry that I sent it that way. I can definitely send over. An updated version, just so that y'all will have a better idea.
That'd be great, and yeah, just for future events, uh, you know, a nice crisp image.
Absolutely.
I think the next year when you do it, we'll have, I hope, have different.
Yeah, we'll have an updated application.
Waypoints and.
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome. No, no worries.
Yeah, so I, we put the July one in, I put the July one in by accident, it should have been for June twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. It's so, yeah, it's the, it's identical applications, he actually submitted three events, but I just. Put forward the June one, I just put forward the June one. Since it was the most impending, we wanted to get, make sure June got done on this meeting. Yeah, they're they're identical. The routes, the, really, it's the name and the time. That's different. We do, uh, that would be Rick, Rich.
Hey folks, this is Rich Morrell, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for having me tonight, I appreciate it. Uh, we, we host the UCAN road races, and as Max was saying, we do um the same route on three different dates. Uh, it sounds like we're talking about the June twenty-second race this evening. Uh, we start at eight AM and finish at eleven AM, and we um. Heard you loud and clear that you'd like to have signs up in advance, alerting the the neighbors, um, I think. Um, what I, a change that I would make uh to our practice is. We have uh signs that we put up a few days in advance that simply say road race Sunday morning. Um, but I heard someone mention um the time of day, so I can have new signs made up that say eight AM to eleven AM. So everyone knows more specifically when we're coming through.
I mean, right.
That's uh, that's an easy fix, and uh we do have a cleanup crew that follows behind the the last runners. Uh, we have a communication car that that follows behind to to keep tabs on everyone, um, and then the the cleanup crew. Follows behind them to take down the signs and that sort of thing, so. Uh, we've done this race in the past, um, we are hoping to to stick to the same plan, the same route. Uh, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Now, you've done races in the past, I'm not sure if it was you, we had one last November, and what they did um. On Middle Street, Midian Hill Street, even though they said no road closures, they stuck cones in the middle of. The driving lane to force to protect the runners on two thirds of the lane. So in essence, they closed the road and said it wasn't going to be a road closure. So I don't want to throw you under the bus to be the exact date of the race, but there was one last year that did that, so.
Yeah, thankfully, that wasn't us, we don't do a race in November, um, but uh, yeah, I would, I wouldn't ever put cones in the road to. To section off an area like that, um, and we do uh communicate with all of our runners uh pretty consistently. That the the roads are always open to traffic, and they are to stay over to the side of the road at all times.
Just to make another comment, we had a resident here a month and a half ago, and they lived on a dead end street that had joined. Well, one of these races was, and the race people set up their uh events tent at the end of the road and at the. Um, facilities there, basically, in essence, it shut down that road for those people, and they're very irrigated, so. Just be careful of any road crossings, if there are no closures with uh event components.
You bet, that's um, again, that's um, thankfully, that wasn't. Thankfully, that wasn't, wasn't us. Um, and our, our events are relatively small. I think, um. Last year, we had just over four hundred runners. Um, and by the time we get from Newburyport into West Newbury. We're three or four miles into the race and they're stretched out pretty thin at that point. So. Um, hopefully that means less of an impact. But, um, I certainly hear the concerns and will be sure that we, uh, are not, uh, causing any of those situations.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the help. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Not tonight, no.
Just here for the show.
I. So they, uh, they're looking, they'd like to get the, uh, eleven cities and towns to approve the letter by June first. That's not the hard deadline. The hard deadline is July first of the MSBA. Uh, June first is something that, uh, came out of the last meeting Chris and I attended. As kind of a, uh, you know, consensus position between, they, they had been aiming for May first and we, we put it, put a hard stop to that. As did other communities. Uh, so June first seemed reasonable. Um, and so, uh, I, I was clear in my comments that meeting that, uh, we had an election May fifth and I. Uh, I suspected that, I said, I suspect the chair would probably like the newly comprised board to be asked on this. So I. I told them the, the earliest in my opinion, this would be put on for board consideration for action would be May fifteenth. And it may or may not be a one meeting issue. It may be, uh, but it may not. So it could be taken up the fifteenth. It could be voted that night. It could be voted the twenty-ninth. Either of those, I believe, would be, either of those would be fine. Uh, so we wanted to include it tonight just to, you know, keep you guys in the loop as to the recent correspondence, the correspondence that went out, um, you know, with the. Kind of rough allocation of, of how the cost of a feasibility study may look, um, you know, for what it's worth. And we had, uh, correspondents come in. I honestly forget if it was yesterday or today, but I think I forwarded that from Maureen Lynch, um. So this is really just on for, for general discussion. It's not on for action and I, I have it penciled in for the fifteenth.
Didn't point out the chairs, most of your own. The feasibility study that the district has to fund the type of that. That's four six thousand three fifty.
The question, I was just curious, what does the comparison against F twenty-six capital cost? So is the assumption that there is? Um, no other capital cost or twenty-seven, F twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
That, 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 it should not be the assumption.
She was saying that we're going to be on the project.
Yeah, no, there will be others. Yeah.
Potentially a big one. This number two, Kevin Rose, uh, when you were. Probably have to ask him about this because at his first meeting, Woody was going to be voting. They have five hundred thousand dollar share.
Mm-hmm.
So this, this one was made up of five hundred thousand from Woody and five hundred thousand from that. And then the rest distributed amongst the community supply. They will get any permission from the state not to have to do the full assessment. On the Woody about using the previous numbers and updating those. But that would theoretically reduce that number quite a bit.
It should, yeah. It, it absolutely should. I mean, they, they, uh, I think this, you know, refers to that. The state is still going to need. That box to be checked, but it did seem that updating, uh, kind of with inflation, the prior, and not, not starting from scratch. One and a half million, I think. Yeah.
So no sense. I would hope this number will go down, they didn't, you know, say insurance is hot. That's discussion. And they want to.
I think it'd be, it'd be, it'd be good to learn from Kevin, uh, kind of as he gets more insight into how things really go. So for instance, like at the, with the meeting that took place with MSBA. Uh, you know, who specifically is at those meetings and how. Uh, effectively are they communicating some of what we're talking in detail about at these working group meetings? Yeah, because that's a really big point. Oh, I don't doubt that for a second. I think that's why you guys are pointing.
He didn't, he come in and see us.
Good. Well, may, let's maybe for five fifteen, it will invite him in and, and he could be part of the discussion and, you know. This, the, the letter that you're being asked to sign. One thing, Chris, I don't know if you happen to look at the draft agenda for. Next Tuesday's meeting that was emailed around. I think it just went out early today from Mike McCarthy.
They just, they didn't.
Did, did you, did you happen to look at it?
No.
Well, I was, I was a little bit, uh. No, no, it's not bad. It's more, it's kind of funny. Uh, I thought it was kind of funny because, um. Just before I get to what, what happened, so. Uh, Chris had leaned over to me, uh, at the last meeting and, and said, you know, it would be really a neat idea if, uh. You know, if, if the eleven cities and towns do agree to sign it, which, you know, knock on wood, does feel that that's the direction it's going. He, he said, you know, geez, wouldn't it be great if there was a signing ceremony? Where the representative, like, and there was a meeting of eleven cities and towns. And he said, you know, this is Chris's idea. And he said, you know, what a, what an image, like for the Newburyport News and all the papers. And like just to show it's a new day and to really the spirit of like collaboration and. And I, I said, Chris, that's a great idea. Why don't you speak up? And what did you say? Something like, oh, I don't.
Went down to me.
Oh, you did? Okay. Cause I thought you, you kind of said to me like, oh, I, I just, it's a good, I don't really, he, he said, I didn't need any ownership of the idea. So after the meeting, I went over and approached Lane Glenn and, and his, I think it was McCarty, Mike McCarthy was. And so I talked to the couple of them for a few minutes. I, and I said, this Chris's idea. And like, it's a really good idea and they, they loved the idea. So the agenda for next, next Tuesday's meeting says the third item is Angus's idea. I could not have been more specific. This was set around with thirty people today and I'm like. So I saw that, I, I assumed you would have seen it and been like.
I think that is, that's what Woody has to get is more in front of this with the communities.
Mm-hmm.
The simple way to go to show that there's unity on something would be nuts.
Yeah.
The Northern Essex Community College just hired a director of external affairs. So I think, I think Neco is getting the message. I don't know what you're saying.
Nick, Nick was very on top lane, it's fantastic.
Yeah, I think he's very good.
Okay. Session event, TA zone, they. So. First question is. Are, are we going to try to find it in the parcel? I get, I just need him to decide as important. How involved we might be in the next effort? And how do I go about that? Playing for is this like, God, you say? Thank you for attending.
Might as well. That's all you do, right? And you say we want to find a new person.
Be the town.
I mean, this responsibility is that.
So. It's about fifty fifty with the town to have, have select board rate forward and things executive initiative.
I don't know how it's been, but I can tell you in fact legally that either a select board or a planning board can legally initiate its own amendment. So it really is, it's like a jump ball. Uh, it's, it's not prescribed by the state. So in terms of who actually has in practice for the other communities, that I don't know. But I know for absolute fact that, that either body has the authority to bring forward his own amendment.
I guess I, I just wonder if. Maybe you don't follow the, the playing board, it's just been tainted by recent. Official press to. Press that you think we shouldn't even provide.
We'll, we'll clear our intentions, that would be considered, but if there was. More like in the stands and options.
Well, instead of like agreeing to the planning board before I discuss it with you guys.
No, no, all I'm saying is no matter where you put it, any other property, you're going to have other bodies. We're going to be upset in the same fashion. That is going to have to start getting the call now. Uh, before the town meeting exactly before a vote is going to sell.
Unless it's an already developed parcel.
It says they want to. I don't know how I feel if I live there. You said we're going to put it on your properties. I don't know. It's one part of my, go right ahead.
I, I also, and I, I want to be really clear on this because I was approached by a member of the planning board earlier this week and I want to just make sure I'm, I'm. Crystal clear on what I say. So I, I can tell you from a conversation I had with the state, uh, and it was with two high level state officials with housing and livable communities. Uh, probably four or five weeks ago, it was a Zoom meeting that myself, the town planner, uh, Dylan, uh, Flinker from. Uh, Dawson Flin, or Dylan Sussman from Dawson Flinker. Uh, we had had this meeting with two people from HLC. Uh, the purpose, the, the primary purpose of the meeting was to frankly, to put time pressure on them. Because while they had, um, reviewed the prior draft of the zoning from last spring. And it had been submitted this spring. We knew through the grapevine that they, uh, you know, HLC was time constrained because they're dealing with this and how many communities in Eastern Mass. And our town meeting is coming up. We were coming up on the planning board hearing. We wanted to make. Certain that we were going to get their affirmative review of our bylaw, even though it didn't change. That significantly from last spring. It did change and it changed in some ways that are somewhat significant. So anyhow, so we had set up this meeting to basically emphasize the importance that they get us their comments timely and they did. That was the primary purpose. The secondary purpose, at least for me, um. Was I wanted to ask them specifically this question about whether they, uh, would entertain proposing one of these districts. In an already developed area without potential for development units. And the, the answer they gave me was that the regulations don't prohibit that. And that is the advice I have subsequently provided in multiple meetings. Uh, I was, you know. It's been communicated to me by, you know, one planning board member, they were not happy I said that. I said, look, it's, it's factual. And that's, and I would not have said it if I hadn't done my homework and gotten that information. But what I don't know, and this is, um. Just because the regs don't prohibit it. I don't know, because I, I didn't go through the last, I wasn't the one managing the process the last time around. The town planner was and not our current town planner, our former town planner. So, so I don't know when HLC is approving a location, just because the regs don't prohibit it. I don't know if, for instance, you propose Drake's Landing, if they would say that's okay. You still got to go through the, there, there's the compliance model that you've heard referenced. There's a whole process you got to go through where the state has to approve, pre, kind of pre-approve what you're proposing and where you're proposing it. So. You know, while one could extrapolate from statement that the regs don't prohibit it, say, oh, well, anything goes other than municipal and religious and certain categorical exclusions, wetlands and so forth. That, I don't think we can assume anything, you know. So I, I think that's something that really we need to further explore with our current town planner. Uh, of. What would be in bounds in terms of maintaining compliance? Whether the town wants to do that as a matter of policy, that's a different thing. But in terms of get, trying to get more clarity of what would be allowed. By the state in their approval of the site, that's something we need to understand. I did ask the planner to do some research on that. Um, in the last, uh, several weeks, she did, and I, I asked her specifically to look at. Other communities that have brought forward the zoning. Uh, in locations that are already developed, that really have no realistic development potential. And she did research a number of examples and sent them to me. And I think I sent those around, you know, maybe in the, in the run up to town meeting. Uh, in my review of those. Those were primarily, if not entirely, locations where the existing underlying zoning allows high density housing. That is a completely different situation than what we have here in West Newbury. So, so. Maybe the state did approve those in those locations. Is that transferable? I don't think we can assume that. Uh, so we just don't know. Um, so. Run, run them up the flagpole and yeah.
Didn't start right because somebody on Facebook, very distasteful. Said, well, what, my wife, why don't you put it on your property prime? That thought, it's supposed to be a negative thought, but actually, you know what? Put it on my parcel. Got enough acreage to comply, so I took that personal and said, okay, but there are so many parcels, I got an able, it's got forty acres, you could put it on that lane. You know, we probably never going to get dealt either. So you gotta look at a lot of.
So yeah, the compliance model and, and you know, from the, the early stages of the mapping that was done by the consultant, there were, there were a whole chunks of land in West Newbury that were. Categorically excluded.
That's all.
Yeah, yeah. And so that kind of winnows it down. Um.
Yeah, I think the intent, because there's, there's the state, the excluded and the sensitive, those are the only. And then hopefully we get all of the other categories.
Yeah, that was, that's.
So I, and I think it's because the planning board chose to propose something that was in the spirit of the law file rather than.
To accommodate that spirit, but they just, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, if I didn't draw it again and. They don't have to get to the point of the law and property, you know, the one that.
Well, yeah.
And it's, it's or, 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 it doesn't have to be under purchase and sale, it has to be in the house of production. Or, it's for. So. I, I think, I, I know Dylan said it.
Again, these are questions that we do a little bit for, we had a lot of work.
His, his assumption it wasn't eligible was because it was town.
Because it was town owned and there was no current purchase, or like no.
It wasn't, it hadn't been authorized for disposition and there wasn't actively an RFP issued and, and basically. The town still maintained control of the property, so.
Well, I guess the question is. Do you want to read this in the planning portion?
It does, I think we need to have some new important direction. Probably best have a conversation.
Is there a way for you both to do it?
Um.
We, no. Kind of more transferable.
I hate when people say stuff like that. Plan from partner. Okay, I'm a little. And to me, the biggest problem with this whole process isn't. The town's fine with. I think most of you. The problem seemed to be that just didn't seem like it was. Anybody was informed. I got more information from the other town. Select things like fourth and home and so what they do happen, they approach it. I have no conscience, but I did, did any of those. It just seemed like it would have done deal. No matter what you say, no matter what you do, this is worth it, they shut us down. That's how it came across. That's why. That's why it was not, you know. My, my thing, hey? It just, it just, I hope people start. A lot, you said it was a done deal with the town, because the other parcels were done.
Alright, so. See what.
Yeah, I'm trying to, so, so, you know, I wouldn't be sitting here in conversation, but. Do you see now? The done, I mean, there are, there are buyers, you know, a new, a new set of buyers, but you see the done property.
I'll be at the nonstarter one. Because it was pretty loud and clear, like. Look at an orange. I think you need to do that or, or run that through to see if it's an option or not.
Well, well, choice. Is, is there a, um. Sorry, I'm tired. Is there like, uh. An industry here where you get companies, factories, you know, that issue here. I'm doing it now, so.
No, we don't.
You can always do that.
You can always do that. I think if people will do choice, is there like, is this or nothing?
One thing I would say, if if we do, you know, look at the regs, just say, this is what required, you know, into parcel and just send it in that last and let people say what they weren't about to, but I think that'd be great, generating some lines with people and then a short that other ground.
My only concern is that it wasn't just the bodies to the next property.
Right.
That's the problem, it's a tight town, but as Kevin just said, I think it was a process that
You reached out to a lot of people.
The appropriate education, no, it was not. It was too focused on the one parcel.
It felt like it was being forced to not occur. It felt like if you do this, you're not gonna get it, you don't do this, it was like we're being punished. It would not do.
I think the point you're asking is we're gonna move forward with another option to do, I don't know what that is, I noticed parcel by the highway where he talks about. I don't, I don't know. You got done, you got that one, you got Mullen, you got private, so we have to start the process anew. You keep the same regulations, other than
Well, that's a huge part, you know, so excellent.
So if you have time, we'll do a shit.
So do we wanna propose? Or are you able to? I I don't know if they, they're probably wanna talk about.
Yeah, I'd rather have a new person, meet real people. Well, this will be a very question.
Maybe I'll just propose to them that you
I think it'd be good to to kind of let, I'm not let, you don't need to let them do anything, they're elected official, they do what they want, but I I think to to kind of have them have their conversation like you're having now. Listen, if and and kind of, I think it would be interesting just to hear where, you know, they where they are coming out of the the vote, what are their thoughts and I think you as a board can gauge, do you feel you guys are like fairly aligned? Because it um I think it'd be helpful to understand where they're coming from. Uh and then, you know, someone's gonna need to make a decision of of who's really gonna, like I said, jump ball, who's gonna, who's gonna grab the ball and run with it. No, no, uh no, it's not.
Well, they might wanna wash their hands of it too, they might
Those kinds of things have happened in communities where you've had a select part of the planning board with competing zoning proposal, so it's it's not pretty, I don't think that's, I don't think that's, yeah, right, that's true, uh so uh
You just don't recommend it as my personal war.
All right, so yeah, see where they come from and that, right?
One, one thing I will be looking into, I I looked, I glanced at earlier this week, but but I want to make sure I've got the numbers uh firm is uh what remaining resources we have in the the uh, you know, kind of uh outside support, whether that's, cuz for instance, like the compliance model or mapping. Uh I don't think we would need to modify the regulations, uh so I I I I think we're gonna be in good shape there. But I just want to understand, uh I mean, let's say there's another parcel looked at and that triggers an interest to do another site distance study. Personally, I don't think we need to do a traffic study, I I never kind of never did. Uh the site distance I thought was helpful, but that can be done in small money, but I I want to understand what our resources are, if we do need outside support on any aspect of this. E- even like the water, I mean that's, you know, we did quite a lot of due diligence on on the, on not just the uh NAPS, but on the NAPS, the Don and the Mullen, and there were reasons, when you read that hydraulic uh analysis. The uh NAPS was the only one of the three where uh si- there was system wide fire flow at the minimum thousand gallons per minute with this development, that was the only one of the three. So these kinds of due diligence, uh you know, do come with a price tag and and there is remaining funds. I just need to make sure we've processed all invoices, I need to close out the the land tech contract, I need to make sure that I'm not counting money that maybe is spent but not invoiced yet, so that I can come up, get a true number of exactly what uh resources we do have if if we do need outside support on any of this.
I think it's all right due diligence. Everything was covered, had an optics day, but you know, nobody seemed to, this was a passionate issue that that all became their own, so.
And I think that kind of ties back to what one of you said earlier, which is it was, it was by the time it all played out and came to a vote, I think it was too much about the site. And and really very little about the policy, very little of anything, or or the kind of the factual underpinning of like why this, why this recommendation was was being made.
That was, that was never
That wasn't even discussed, yeah.
Gonna get the whole, the whole rationale for the parcel.
Well, I think it was in public, but not at town meeting.
Certainly not.
Yeah, not a town meeting and not not one, not one iota. Oh, no, no, the mon- that money is under our, I've signed every contract, that's not under their oversight and that was clear when that funding was approved.
Um one other thing I wanted to mention, I I shared the email which were a few, some couple of voters. Would you allow them? Okay. But I just wanted to get clear that there's a purchase and sale agreement on the property, the select board or the town can't approach either the buyer or the seller. So anybody has that, I know, but I just wanted to
We we had it actually with regard to the Society of St. John, the Board of Water Commissioners was asking the town to do that that exact situation. Yes, right, right.
We were just saying if it fell through.
That's a, that's a different situation, if if it fell through, yeah.
We're just the troublemakers, we're trying to help. We're gonna try and move forward and help you guys find a place, get the zone of pass, do what we can. We don't wanna just be the the water bird, if people stop there.
All right.
So that's just information. It's it's, I mean, now, yeah, I think, I think it's, yeah.
All right, that very much.
No, so on, in the paragraph, the first paragraph says, on January seventeen, twenty twenty five, so now go down to the um eighth line, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight line, in the middle said, fourth pole mounted electric vehicle supply equipment. So that's, that's, trying to come up with this, with a uh with a a way to safely within and regulatory wise uh locate um any charging station by utility poles. You got power? You got a structure to mount a charger to? But there are a lot of other issues besides that.
All right, now we're done.
Great, is that something, uh maybe you you wanna forward that to Energy and Sustainability, in case anyone wants to offer comments?
Um sure.
Cuz I think a lot of, yeah, I'll send it as a standalone document, yeah, I think cuz these kinds of things go to every city and town in the state and probably the vast majority kind of gloss over it and look past it, so I think when those communities that do take time to write comments, I think they do listen.
Yeah.
Because I don't think a lot of communities actually do give comments of these kinds of things, cuz it's so, it's just a lot of it's not always clearly written.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, you might, you know, the
Yeah, send it to them if they wanna
Might have comics, but in reality, we're in the lives, I mean, we're a tiny town.
Yeah.
We don't have a, we don't have a central, you know, commercial district, we don't, we don't have a place where people go and they leave their cars, generally speaking, for the one period of time where they could charge.
What, next to the streets? Would that be our whole the next to the streets?
All right, so uh move that meeting to executive session, sorry, NGL chapter thirty eight, section point nine, page two, three, seven, seven.
Take it first.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for sharing that.
All right.
I'll be back again, thanks for enjoying this stuff, my dad used to be a committee man and all that.
All right, and for those who are remote, uh this is just to to announce that the board will be recessing to executive session and will uh re- uh return to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment, thank you.